Very good, everyone. Thank you all for coming. Can you all please rise and we'll pledge to lead us to our flag? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Present.
Councilmember Adam is absent. Councilmember McNamie?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Here.
And Mayor Engler?
Here. We don't have any continuances of items, but I do want to make a quick announcement and a recognition of some of the folks in our audience today. And I wanted to let everybody know that we just had the celebration of Diwali. For to get the name right, thank you. It's the Festival of Lights. And for those who celebrate, all happiness to you. And I appreciate you coming in tonight. Very good. Madam Clerk, do we have some public speakers?
We do. This is a time and place for public comments. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Eleven individuals have requested to speak. And pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have a couple of people on Zoom first up. We have Rosanna Guerra on Zoom. Rosanna, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor Engler and City Council members. My name is Rosanna Guerra, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. During the almost thirty years of living in Thousand Oaks, I have known our community to be warm and accepting. However, within the last two-plus years, and especially notable since the pandemic, the community that first attracted my family to Thousand Oaks has changed. And I'm very alarmed. Let me take you through some events that have caused this alarm. COVID deniers gathering at the mall and storming a grocery store. A hate banner being displayed over the Linover Pass repeatedly. Multiple incidences of aggressiveness at school board meetings with men following attendees to their car. Men photographing attendees at school board meetings. A man walking around the Rotary Fair videotaping people randomly of opposing political views. Defacing a school. Superintendent of schools being threatened. I'm grateful that the police force has taken action on a threat against the superintendent of schools. However, more serious action needs to be considered against an element, either by locals or outside our city, that are attempting to intimidate our community. I'm speaking before council because I value the quality of life that my family and I have established in Thousand Oaks, and would like to see it restored. Although the incidents at school boards fall outside city council jurisdiction, public safety doesn't. I would encourage any of you to attend a school board meeting as a public citizen and see what is going on. But it isn't just school board meetings, but a concerted effort to divide our community and create hate by disinformation. Why is this happening in our area? Because it's accepted. No one is standing up to this behavior and saying this is not welcome. Other than the anti-hate resolution, the city council has not taken a unanimous stance against this obvious intrusion. Please raise your voice as leaders in our community and recognize what is happening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Guerra. Also on Zoom, we have Thomas Young. Mr. Young?
Mr. Young is not on.
We've lost Mr. Young. If he comes back, we'll try to get him on. On Zoom is Bob Ayers.
What was the name?
Bob Ayers.
Hello. I don't see me on here, but my name is Bob Ayers. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Bob. Go ahead.
Okay. My wife and I first moved to TO in 1991 to raise our children. Coming from the valley, we appreciated how safe and clean it was here. After our kids graduated, we traveled around, and then two years ago, moved back to be near family. We bought a house on a great street with wonderful neighbors and with one exception, the couple across from us. He is a convicted felon, and during the time we've lived in our home, both he and his wife have been arrested many times in Ventura and LA counties for drugs, shoplifting, mail theft, and other crimes. He currently has felony charges in both LA and Ventura. Last June, the police conducted a raid on the house after the owner was found passed out in Agora in a car filled with fentanyl and heroin with the intent to sell. He was back home within twenty-four hours. Last Monday, we woke up to see dozens of police officers and US Marshals with machine guns pointed at that house to capture an alleged murderer staying there. The police told us to shelter in place. People couldn't go to work. Kids couldn't go to school. I missed an important doctor's appointment. This went on for hours until the suspect, Ryan Shire, was arrested. The raid was run by LA Metro. They had to ram the door open, yet chose not to arrest the owner of the house who was with the murder suspect and refused to open the door. For two years, we've watched people come and go from the house, all hours, day and night, and the police have done their best arresting many of them. Unfortunately, they are almost immediately released with a notice to appear in court. But when that date comes, they don't show up, so warrants are issued. It takes weeks and sometimes months to catch them, which time they are then given a new court date and are released again. So this pattern repeats, repeats, and repeats, with court dates getting pushed further and further into the future, with no justice being served. We see police, code enforcement, fire trucks, ambulances, animal control, undercover detectives, narcotics personnel, water department employees, and social services at this house on a regular basis, all at taxpayers' expense. Plus, these people are now living with no water and no trash service. So where is the human waste going? Our quality of life has suffered. Our health and peace of mind have been severely compromised, and we live in danger. We have to shield our young grandchildren when they visit. The police have been great and very responsive, but can only do what the law allows. So regardless of your politics, I urge you to vote for law and order, to support the police, and to help make our streets safe again. And thank you, guys, for your time. And ladies, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. In-house tonight, we have George Senko. George, you're up, followed by Mahud Habbar. Mr. Habbar, if you'd like, you can come down.
Not as mobile as I used to be. You've seen this before. It's still the case. Councilman, Mr. Mayor, Legal, and City Manager. I wondered whether I should come up. Because the question is, are we being heard? We've been coming for the last month. The only thing apparently that the city council heard was that we wanted a cap on the amount this is here was going to hit. Seems like you're more interested in the amount of time, three minutes that I have to speak, than what I have to say. Because you haven't apparently been listening. You're looking down at notes, thinking of the next item on the agenda, and other estimates, other than what we're trying to get across. This is still the situation. This is the plane you built. It's like Boeing and their 747 MAX. In October 2018, in Indonesia, 189 people were lost in the plane. Boeing didn't stop and look at the problem that was existing. Instead, five months later, in Ethiopia, 157 more people were killed. The situation here with the people in the mobile home parks is equally as lethal. The sum of them, the situation is very bad. You have to be like Captain Solenberger and take some kind of action, keep that plane from going down. It's your RSO, not ours, not homeowners, not the landowners. Yours. It's your job to see that that is done. This is a rhetorical question, but you can put your hand up if you want to answer it. And that is the question. Have you read Chapter 25, Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Ordinance, recently? I notice nobody takes the opportunity to say that they have. All that we've gotten, and I'll read you a quote. "The city attorney said there was a risk that the entire ordinance could be subject to a legal challenge if a portion of it was amended." That's not our city attorney. That was a city attorney in Oxnard. Are they all reading from the same script? You know, are they all trying to install threats on us? I talked with Councilman Adams before, and he said, "Let's work this for a solution. Otherwise, we're going to have, in the next year, the second plane go down." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we do have Mahud Habbar. Followed by Sabata.
Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm here to thank you for recognizing the Festival of Deepavali, Festival of Lights, celebrated by people of Hindu, Sikh, Jain, and Buddhist communities around the world. This Monday, Tuesday also marks a great occasion to remember that a man of Hindu faith has become the Prime Minister of Great Britain. Well, I thank you for recognizing the Festival of Deepavali. I just want to raise four concerns. One, they may not be directly related to the thousand cities of Thousand Oaks, but it has happened somewhere in the US in a city like Thousand Oaks. Number one, a resolution against prominent Hindu-American organizations was passed by a city unit of Democratic Party, premised upon demonstrably false claims about these organizations. Recently, a conference on national unity was organized by President Biden, "United We Stand," on September 11th. Hindu community was totally excluded by having any representative in this national conference that is supposed to unite. So did other minority religions like Buddhism and Jainism. None of them were represented. Some of the elected officials are falling for the lies of anti-Hindu hate groups, and they are unilaterally refusing to meet representatives of major Hindu organizations without any recourse. This has happened in many cities across this country. I just want to bring to attention to your notice. Last year, I mentioned this in my previous meeting as well. Academia is significantly organized in spreading this Hindu phobia. They organized an online conference in 2021, and they called for, literally, these were their words, destruction of Hinduism and Hinduithwa. And they had a three-day conference on this. And academics get a free ride in this country because of freedom of speech. I mean, you cannot touch them. But I just, as an administrator, I just want to be aware of these things happening elsewhere in the country and make sure that such a thing is not repeated here in Thousand Oaks. But I take this opportunity to thank you again for recognizing Deepavali. And our president had the largest-ever party at the White House on the occasion of Deepavali this year. I hope next year, City Hall will organize a party, and we can all dance for Bangrag, Bharatanatyam, and whatever, Hindu traditional and non-traditional dances. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Habbar, followed by Pavan Kanugoh.
Thank you, councilmembers, for this opportunity. I would like to bring it to attention about a very unique program called Seva Diwali. Seva means service to mankind. So as part of this program, we have been organized and collected canned food. It's a food drive. And we have donated 750 pounds of food to the Manna Food Bank in Thousand Oaks for the past two years. So 750 pounds each. And for the third year, this year, also, we will be donating about 500 pounds of canned food as a way of thanking the community, because giving back to society is what is the highlight of Diwali, where, you know, it's, because we want to celebrate this as a community. So I'm so glad that we are participating in this in the city of Thousand Oaks as a Hindu community to the... Hindu community to the, all the family members of Thousand Oaks. Thank you, and happy Diwali.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Kanugou.
Thank you, member. Thank you, Mayor, and all the members. I was told that I should register my name as a speaker. All I wanted to do was give a plaque and some Diwali sweets. So if you can guide me to the right place where I can deposit that, that's all I wanted to do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Peggy Jo Smith, followed by Jimmy Washington.
What a nice sentiment that was for you to bring snacks for our council members so they'll stay awake. I just wanted to say I'm back again, and I'm not going away. I am Peggy Jo Smith, and I have lived in Thousand Oaks for over 50 years. I grew up here. My dad lived here. My mom lived here. They're both gone. And what I'm seeing at the mobile home parks, as I went through and talked with every person in Ventura Villas, was there are people there who are not going to be able to stay in their homes and will be homeless in short order if this rent control issue doesn't get taken care of. Last time I was here, I gave you some positives. I said, "Look into the three items that I had asked you to look into," and I would ask for a show of hands of whether you've looked into those or not, but I really don't want to know, because I know you haven't. So I'm just perplexed again, as I was the last time I spoke, that the county of Ventura has a mobile home park review board. They meet three or four times a year. How is it that the county of Ventura can have a board or a committee for mobile home park rent, and this great city of Thousand Oaks does not? Stop and think about that for a minute, council. Stop and think about who you are. And those of you that are up for election, I have talked to many senior citizens, and we are many, here tonight and all over this city. And I'm going to guess that they're not going to vote for the people that aren't going to support them. So I think twice about that before Election Day. With that being said, I've looked into some other cities. Malibu, 5% increase. City of Santee, 3% increase. City of Fullerton, 3% increase. I could go on and on. Fresno, San Luis Obispo. Yet here we are, Thousand Oaks, the beautiful community that we are, can't seem to support our seniors. That's a sad, sad day, Mayor, a sad day for this council. So I ask you to find a solution, which I brought up last time. I ask you to look in your hearts and to look in your mirrors at home, because you're all getting old too. And someday, you might be in that place of, "Where am I going to live because I can't afford this type of rent increase?" Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Washington, followed by Bruce Udelf.
Good evening. I'm Jim Washington. I live in Newberry Park. I am a former Army veteran, senior non-commission officer, 20 years, former social worker for the VA, 12 years, former real estate agent, year and a half, former drug and alcohol abuse counselor, year and a half. But tonight, I'm here to talk to you about my dog. We have a beautiful 11-year-old Labrador dog named Sadie. A few months ago, Sadie hurt her right hip while running in the park. Afterwards, I had to lift her in the car to get her to the park, where she's free to do what dogs do. She recovered from her injury, but she now meanders toward the car, then hesitate at the car, waiting for me to lift her into the car. After a period of problem solving, I discovered that if I tapped her on her rear, she would leap into the car unassisted. Now, after the last council meeting that I attended, I was reminded of Sadie's behavior. It left me believing that this city council is broken. Every one of you appears to have your own agenda. We who have spoken have done a tremendous amount of work in trying to prod you into doing the right thing, but those who are in need of help, or those who have lost all hope. Our goal is to get you to the park, a metaphor, a place where you can put aside your ego, your fears, your political, economic, or personal interests, a place where you can regain a sense of purpose, a place where you can reconnect with your spiritual self, that part of you that makes you human, the part of you that wants to save a life, to get up the next morning and do it all over again, that part of you that wants to find solutions, not that part of you that has an imaginary fear of being sued or doing the right thing. You have a legal, ethical, and moral factor that protects you, and only if you're willing to use the tools at your disposal. There are lots of lives out there that need saving. People depend on you, and I hope that you tonight will look at our issue from a different perspective, not as a politician, not as a real estate agent, but as a public servant, someone who is willing to become a social worker long enough in order to save a life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Bruce Udelf.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Bruce Udelf. I live in Newberry Park, in a mobile home, and I'm here to talk about the mobile home issue. Number one, I owe you an apology. Couple meetings ago, I came in and talked about those of us in the park being eligible for reverse mortgages. Unfortunately, the real estate agent working with me and myself did not realize, because we rent the land, or we don't actually own the land, we rent, we are not eligible for reverse mortgages. So I'm sorry if I misled you. It certainly was not on purpose. I am in favor of some type of a cap. I hope something can be worked out. But I want to talk about a completely different subject today. This is a financial issue. It is also a health issue. My background, and I've stated before, I worked with seniors for 40 years, running retirement communities such as University Village, very large places. I also did numerous educational sessions. I want to talk to you about what it's like to be old. Gerontologists classify us into three categories. 65 to 75 is what is called young old. 75 to 85 is old, and 85 and beyond is old, old, with all due respect to Mr. Jones. And there are reasons that they have those age ranges and everything. Probably, the operative two words for us is, in many instances, change. We have a problem with it. It's very difficult for some seniors. Secondly, the other big operative word is loss. We have all kinds of losses in our lives. It varies with the person. Loss of a spouse, loss of contemporaries, loss of friends, loss of other relatives, loss of vision, hearing impairment, ambulation issues, memory loss, et cetera, et cetera. I could go on and on. As we age, things change for us. Our skin becomes thinner and drier, and it often itches. We tend to lose our fat layer, particularly after the age of 80 or 85. That may be welcome news to a few of you, but the reality is, that's what insulates us and keeps us cooler in the summer, warmer in the winter. So that's why you sometimes see older people wearing sweaters, even though it's 80 degrees out. They just can't cope anymore. We have been hit with arthritis. There are the diseases of old age. After the age of 85, 5% of us will be diagnosed with Parkinson's disease. I just read statistics from a scholarly study today done by Columbia University. 35% of us after the age of 60, at some point, will get a diagnosis of dementia. So we're facing a lot of stuff. And then we get hit with an 8.5% rate increase on top of everything else we're facing, and I can tell you that's difficult. It can cause loss of appetite. It can cause memory impairment, in some cases, strokes, heart attacks, and so on. So as you move forward, please keep in mind, this is a major financial issue. It is also a significant health issue. Hopefully, something can happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our last public speaker is tonight is, oh, I'm sorry, George Rosenthal, and then Jeff Schwartz.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is George Rosenthal. I live in Ventura Estates. In March of '22, the CPI all-inclusive was used, and an 8.5% CPI was approved. The Thousand Oaks Ordinance 525 states that the Finance Director shall set the CPI yearly. Thousand Oaks Ordinance also states it's the duty of the council to protect the Thousand Oaks Mobile Home Park residents from excessive rent increases. Any land rent increase is a permanent monthly cost to senior homeowners, with a CPI expected to be higher yet all the way through '24. The Finance Director, the City Manager, the City Attorney, and the council did not take into account the damage that the 8.5 increase and future increases would do to seniors. The all-inclusive CPI used is based on Long Beach, Los Angeles, not Ventura County, which has a lower cost of living. Thousand Oaks City Council constantly brings up the fear of lawsuits by park owners and loss of any rent control, thus causing their inaction. Because of no cap, we are trying to come up with ideas and concepts to pay for the part of the rent increase. We presented multiple grant and assistance ideas at the Thousand Oaks Council last two weeks ago. You ignored the information, did not put us on the agenda to discuss the solution for the problem of the city ordinance. We suggested block grants. Rent assistance with block grants may not be an option, but other areas of financial assistance with block grants could be offered to open cash flow for rent. The staff and the council need to investigate this, not leave it to 75-year-old people to find it. Ventura County Low Rent Program is a federally funded rental program that allows families to choose their home and private housing. This may include the family's present residence. The Federal Tenant Rental Base Assistance Program is a rental assistance when participants choose the housing in which they want to reside. Up to five years' worth of rental assistance could be awarded. Social Security Increase for 2022 is being touted to assist in the high cost of inflation for food and medicine. Instead, you're allowing that increase to be paid to millionaires who don't even live in Thousand Oaks. Something is not right here. Who in their right mind would allow this? Why are we not on the agenda, working with the staff, to find an answer? What's going on with the council? This has been week after week after week with nothing, nothing back, but excuses of, "We can't do it, or we'll get sued." You know, it's time to make a decision, suit or what's being right.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Schwartz, there you are.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Jeff Schwartz from Thousand Oaks. More than 40 years ago, back in the late 1970s, before the Reagan Revolution, before Trumpism, there was a major change in state politics. The nation at the time was undergoing economic problems that had some similarities to the problems we're facing today. There was record-high government spending and concern about government deficits. There was severe price inflation, and the cost of food and gas had shot up. Government had grown larger in size and was more expensive. Taxes were high, and anybody who said the taxes should be lowered was laughed at. Pundits said that we can't possibly reduce taxes, or else we'll have to fire all the police and firefighters and close all the libraries. They said it was impossible to reduce taxes, because this would require changing the laws. And certainly, nobody thought that an ordinary citizen could lead a major tax movement in the U.S. But all those naysayers and skeptics were proven wrong by one man, a man named Howard Jarvis. Jarvis was an unlikely person to lead a massive tax revolt in taxes. He was in his 70s and had never before been elected to any public office. When Jarvis began fighting taxes in the 1960s, residents of California seemed willing to accept high taxes. But as the 1970s wore on, oil crises, inflation, the Vietnam War, and Watergate all eroded public trust in government. And inflation, combined with rising home values, were making it harder for many Californians to afford their property taxes. Jarvis had finally developed a broad constituency for his anti-tax crusade. He was able to gather three times the number of signatures needed to qualify Prop 13 for the ballot. Prop 13 was opposed by virtually every newspaper editorial board in California, every business group, the Chamber of Commerce, every education and labor group, every institution. Nevertheless, Prop 13 passed by a margin of nearly 2 to 1, a virtual landslide. Prop 13 has been the most successful tax curtailment law in the country. It's time for this city council to embrace a bold new vision for eventually lowering taxes in this county. But before we can talk about reducing taxes, we'll need to make a moral case for doing so by first reducing our expenditures. It's time for council to start looking into ways to reducing our dependency on taxpayer money that is offered to us by the big tax spenders in Sacramento and Washington, D.C. I'm Jeff Schwartz. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. That was our final public speaker. Thank you all. Any staff comments?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Engler. Just a couple of follow-up comments. The speaker that was speaking about the issues regarding law enforcement in their neighborhood, we are well aware of that. In fact, Chief Paris spoke with that gentleman earlier today. It is a complex situation. I think many people were aware that we had a high-profile arrest that was made by LAPD that the speaker referenced at that location. It's certainly a home that law enforcement is very well aware of, our code enforcement's well aware of, and we're working collaboratively with the district attorney's office to take the most stringent approach possible as we try to address the situation in that location. And we certainly feel for those neighbors, and we'll do everything we can to support that. In regards to mobile home park items, as council is aware, the item was agendized and it was discussed by city council on two occasions. And certainly appreciate the ongoing sensitivity, and there's been a lot of work that's been put into that on behalf of council and the residents in that regard. In terms of the, just on the taxation question, just a reminder for the public and the council, the city of Thousand Oaks has the floor, the lowest sales tax rate in the state of California, and we also have amongst the lowest property tax rates in the state. Just, that concludes my remarks.
Ms. Bill de la Peña?
Thank you for those remarks. I just don't want to dismiss the mobile home tenants that are here this evening. And I know we used to have a resident roundtable, which was disbanded many years ago, and I would like to throw out an idea, this is not on the agenda, but I think that we need to look at different avenues and also speak to staff about how we can remedy the situation, not this evening, since it's not on the agenda, but obviously, they've been here now numerous times. They're asking for something, whether it is starting. I've already been in contact with a resident who is willing to help in other, through other means, but let's do that offline and see what we can do through staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill de la Peña. Very good. We have our consent calendar up next. Any items to pull, my fellow council members? Very good. I'll entertain a motion for...
Move the consent calendar.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0, and I do have two ordinance titles to read into the record. An ordinance amending the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code by adding Article 37 to Title IX, Chapter IV, modifying Sections 9-4.202 and 9-4.2202, and adding Section 9-3.305 to Title IX, Chapter III, Article III, to update the city zoning regulations to implement 2021 Senate Bill 9, SB 9, including the addition of a ministerial process for the approval of urban lot splits and two-unit housing developments, MCA 2022-70465, Ordinance Number 1704-N-S, and an ordinance repealing in its entirety Chapter II, Article 11 of Title X, and adding Chapter II, Article 11 of Title X, Adopting Regulations for Water Conservation, Ordinance Number 1705-N-S.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, we have our Item 8, which is public hearings. Madam Clerk, can you go ahead and open it for us?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A, Self-Storage Facilities Municipal Code Amendment 2022-70571 and Specific Plan Amendment 2022-70799. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Two individuals have presented speaker cards pursuant to Council standards. Each speaker will have five minutes.
Thank you. And we do have staff available to make a presentation and answer questions. We have Scott Colwitt making the presentation. And also available is Mr. Parker for questions. Thank you.
So, good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and members of the public. Tonight, we are here to host a public hearing on the proposed self-storage facilities municipal code amendment.
Can you speak a little closer to the mic? Thank you.
My apologies for that. So, tonight, we're here for a public hearing on the self-storage facilities municipal code amendment and the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan amendment. So, the request that's before us tonight is essentially to find the proposed regulations exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, and to read the ordinance by title only and waive any further hearings to amend the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code and the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. In summary, these proposed regulations were developed by considering peer jurisdictions' regulations, industry trends, community needs, and economic development potential. And the proposed regulations would allow the existing 15 self-storage facilities that are in operation today to continue operating and allow for up to 30 additional self-storage facilities to be permitted in our industrial areas. So, as way of some background, there are 15 existing self-storage facilities within the city today. Between 2019 and 2021, the city's Economic Development Division had 15 inquiries from parties interested in bringing additional self-storage facilities to the city. Earlier this year, on January 25th and February 22nd, City Council adopted interim urgency ordinances to impose a one-year moratorium on city approval or issuance of any permit, license, or entitlement relating to applications for the development and construction of self-storage facilities. And the City Council initiated code revisions declaring the intention to consider new and/or revised development standards, processes, and findings for new or modified self-storage facilities to be incorporated into the city's regulatory documents. Staff was tasked with three different items. First, conduct a comprehensive analysis of the jurisdiction's regulations, propose updated standards, and, three, evaluate the potential citywide economic impacts of allowing a proliferation of self-storage facilities in consideration of the short and long-term impacts of utilizing land areas for operations that do not create employment opportunities. Unless extended by the City Council, the moratorium is currently set to expire on January 25th, 2023. As of the date when the first moratorium was adopted, the city was processing two pre-applications for self-storage facilities. One was at 120 Via Merida, and the second was at 530 Hampshire Road. Since the moratorium was adopted in January 2022, the pre-applications were withdrawn, and the fees for those applications had been refunded to the applicants. Of note, the city's Economic Development Division has been contacted since then about potential for those properties to be used for other uses, including biotech and manufacturing, medical offices, general offices, and research and development facilities. A little bit more of recent background for you. On October 10th, 2022, the Planning Commission voted 3-2 to approve a motion to recommend the City Council to adopt a resolution for the proposed ordinance. All commissioners at that meeting recognized that self-storage facilities are not economic generators, and these facilities compete with commercial and industrial properties for development opportunities. Unanimous support was given to remove self-storage facilities from the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. The commissioners who recommended adoption of the proposed regulations commented that self-storage facilities are a needed use in the community. The commissioners acknowledged the proposed self-storage regulations elevate new self-storage facilities to the highest industrial, industry standards, while also limiting the availability of land use for self-storage facilities to prioritize the continued growth of the city's economic engines. The commissioners who voted against the motion opined that either the proposed requirements were too onerous or there was a lack of market analysis. An analysis of self-storage facility square footage on a per capita basis with neighboring jurisdictions was requested as a formal market analysis was not conducted. Following the Planning Commission meeting, staff has contacted neighboring jurisdictions to calculate self-storage facility square footages on a per capita basis. As directed by the City Council, staff has methodically evaluated existing city codes. We've gathered data about existing self-storage facilities, reviewed and evaluated self-storage regulations of 24 other jurisdictions, and we reviewed self-storage publications. Comparison cities were chosen as they were either in or adjacent to Ventura County or had a similar size and socioeconomic status as Thousand Oaks or because they were mentioned in industry publications. Staff reviewed scores of widely available self-storage literature published online, and staff reached out to all of the existing operators within the community and other self-identified interested parties to share the regulations in advance of the Planning Commission's public hearing. This collective research effort has been used to assist the city in crafting proposed definitions and regulations for consideration first by the Planning Commission and now by the City Council. As proposed, the regulations would pertain to future self-storage facilities and proposed additions or modifications to existing self-storage facilities. If the proposed regulations are adopted, existing self-storage facility operators could continue to lawfully operate the facility consistent with the permits they have on hand today and that are in effect as of the date of the municipal code amendment and specific plan amendment. So, as mentioned, there are 15 facilities currently in the city, and they are currently allowed to be permitted in the C2 Zone, the M1 and M2 Zones, and within the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, provided that they are not directly on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The city has, in addition to those 15, the city also has two specialty storage facilities for vehicles and other large-scale items. Since 2020, a new self-storage facility has been approved and is under construction at 2650 Willow Lane. In addition to that, the conversion of an existing industrial facility was approved and constructed at 2451 Townsgate Road. And all of you might know that one as the Joffre Building. As far as the number of facilities in Thousand Oaks, Thousand Oaks and Camarillo have the largest number of self-storage facilities of any city in Ventura County. And the city continues to receive numerous inquiries as far as the development of additional self-storage facilities, which can accommodate both traditional self-storage facilities as well as the newer pod self-storage facilities. So, we were asked to reach out to fellow jurisdictions to provide a per capita square footage calculation by the Planning Commission, and we've done so. After requesting, only two other jurisdictions provided their statistics to us to assist with comparing the per capita square footages. As shown on the screen, Thousand Oaks has a slightly higher per capita square footage threshold than Simi Valley. Industry representatives have told staff and the Planning Commission that they use a per capita square footage metric to analyze growth, but the industry has not provided that metric to staff or the Planning Commission. Staff does not believe that either a formal market analysis or the per capita square footage statistics, however, are necessary, since the purpose of the recommended amendment is not to preclude these facilities from the city, rather, they're to establish appropriate locational and regulations specific to these operations. Again, as noted before, up to 30 additional facilities can be allowed per our existing, our proposed regulations, and the existing 15 facilities may continue to operate. As far as jurisdictional trends, staff did review the development standards of 24 other jurisdictions in Southern California. And through a comparative analysis, staff identified that, first, communities regularly require self-storage facilities to attain a discretionary permit of some type; and, two, there are a wide range of ways to regulate the self-storage uses to alleviate potential community impacts associated with these facilities. But in short, staff did not find a single one way to regulate self-storage facilities. Evaluation of municipal code standards identified common self-storage facility themes, and those are shared with you here on the screen. First, they are located in industrial areas. Caretaker units have regularly been required. Separate planning entitlements for the structures and uses are often required. Self-storage specific parking regulations are found in many codes, and there are various prohibitions about what could occur in these facilities. Staff also reviewed industry publications. And upon evaluating those publications, we identified these trends, and we shared these with the industry as well. First, the industry is moving towards fully automated facilities. There are robust security systems that are being incorporated into the buildings. The climate control is regularly required. Higher architectural standards are on their way. The industry is turning away from exterior roll-up doors. There's an introduction of mixed uses into these buildings, and interior recreation and collector vehicle and boat storage is regularly found in the newer facilities. So, staff's review of multiple jurisdictions and the industry trends resulted in acknowledgement that the city's standards could benefit from an update. The goals and policies of the city's general plan include the development of additional tools that will enable industrial, commercial, and residential developments to flourish in an efficient and compatible manner. To move towards accomplishing this goal, it has been determined that there's a need to provide further regulations for self-storage facilities and uses while giving due consideration to the highest and best use of the city's land use inventory. According to the Self-Storage Association's industry publication, the site selection is dependent on a variety of factors: ease of access, proximity and density of customers, expected growth, current storage saturation levels, availability of land, appropriate zoning, and commuter traffic pattern and visibility were specifically named. Based on staff's research, self-storage facilities are destination locations which do not solely depend on enticing pass-by-vehicle trips to patronize their businesses. This is similar to warehousing and wholesaling uses. And self-storage facilities typically have building shapes and sizes which are similar to warehousing and wholesaling uses. These factors make them physically more compatible in industrial zones than commercial and residential zones. Staff's research has shown that many cities within Southern California have implemented restrictions on the distance self-storage facilities must be from freeways and arterials. The intent of this distance requirement is to provide prime visibility and access locations to the city's economic generators and civic institutions. There's a concern about the large concentration of self-storage facilities within the city as the use competes for space in buildings that could house a variety of businesses. And self-storage facilities do create short-term economic generation while developments are constructed. However, self-storage facilities are not long-term economic generators as they create few permanent jobs. Moreover, self-storage facilities may displace economic generators such as biotech and life science uses or commercial uses, which typically generate more permanent jobs in comparable square footage. So, in consideration of all that's been stated and a review of the city's guidelines for development, especially within the corridors of the 101 and 23 freeways, staff proposed the following location-based standards that would allow commercial and industrial economic generators to take the primacy on the most visible locations, while self-storage facilities would be allowed to develop on less prominent but still accessible sites. Our regulations propose to eliminate new self-storage uses within the C2 Zone and the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, to direct new self-storage uses within the M1 and M2 Zones, and prohibit new self-storage facilities from within 1,000 feet from the center line of the 101 and 23 freeways and 500 feet from the center line of our arterial roads. The slide that's before you right now shows that self-storage facilities would be prohibited in the yellow, red, and green bands that are proposed or superimposed on the map. In addition, this slide shows that the self-storage facilities would be prohibited in the red, orange, yellow, and green and blue bands superimposed on this map, which shows the arterial roads. To maintain development of compatible structures in the M1 and M2 Zone, staff recommends retaining the industrial development standards for the front, side, and rear setbacks, height, and minimum lot size for self-storage facilities. A maximum two-acre lot size, however, is proposed. Self-storage facilities do not attract a large number of people to their facilities, and their facilities have historically been inward-facing. Collectively, this means that self-storage facilities do not create a hubbub of activity that's visible from the street. The self-storage industry has introduced two activating trends, which are moving in opposite directions. The industry has moved towards fully automating self-storage facilities. While this reduces costs for the self-storage industry, it decreases the level of activity experienced at self-storage facilities as no human interaction is needed. On the other hand, self-storage facilities have been built with a mix of office, retail, and restaurant uses, which are on the front of the building. Current city regulations require that self-storage facilities do include an office or retail development as a component of their development on the street frontage, and that self-storage facility buildings are either behind their office and retail function with a minimum setback of 100 feet from the property line. To make self-storage facility locations more active, especially as experienced from the street, the proposed regulations embellish the current ground-floor regulations by requiring the street-facing frontage of the building to contain office, retail, restaurants, and/or a caretaker unit along the entire frontage of the facility, and those uses be a minimum of 20 feet deep. The self-storage facility, if it doesn't provide those along the frontage, it could be located on the property without those, but it would need to be proposed behind a building that does front the street. A self-storage facility could use the office and retail space that would be provided for their own needs. According to the Self-Storage Association, about 50% of self-storage facilities nationwide have a resident manager apartment. Local operators shared the industry is moving away from caretaker units due to the fully automated trend. For new facilities, staff recommends a caretaker unit requirement to activate the site, to provide onsite management, and to add an additional level of security simply through the known presence of an... the known presence of an onsite manager. For existing facilities, the draft regulations allow expansion and require a caretaker unit within the expansion area. Staff wants to recognize that we did receive a number of comments that were provided to us, so in response to those comments that we've received since the planning commission meeting, staff recommends projects which would be allowed an opportunity to have a one-time expansion to either provide a caretaker unit or provide a security system for the entire building, and that security system would be reviewed by the city's police department. One thing that we want to let the city council know, too, is if caretaker units are constructed, those would count towards your RENA obligations. As we look into the future and to ensure the next generation of self-storage facilities in the city meets the highest operational standards in the industry, staff recommends requiring the self-storage industry's operational trends into the operational standards. Industry trends not only cover security and lighting systems, but they also recognize self-storage and niche interests that require the off-site storage materials in conditioned space. Additionally, the standards proposed allow for the continued growth of the transportable pod industry while using the buildings to screen the storage of those pods from the As a result of implementing the location-based changes and maximizing the parcels and the maximum parcel size standard, all of the existing 15 self-storage facilities in the city would become legal non-conforming facilities. Existing self-storage facility operators could continue to lawfully operate their facilities consistent with their existing permit, which is in effect as of the date the MCA and the specific plan amendment would be adopted. The proposed regulations include language, which specifies legal non-conforming self-storage facilities could have a one-time modification in the future to increase the size of the building and expand the use. Per the edits in the supplemental packet, the modification could occur either within the existing footprint of the building or as an external addition, but not both. Should a non-conforming self-storage facility cease for six months or more, it would be deemed abandoned, and the permit would be void and of no longer standing. Per the edits in the supplemental package, language was also suggested to clarify that if an existing facility is involuntarily destroyed, it can be reconstructed. And hitting the home stretch here, based on the geospatial analysis of the current parcels implementing the proposed location-based changes and the maximum parcel size standard, again, approximately 30 parcels could potentially contain a self-storage facility, 30 additional parcels. As proposed, no new self-storage use shall be allowed by right. No new self-storage facilities would be required to be reviewed by the planning commission at a public hearing, and a development permit would be required for the physical structure, and a special use permit would be required for the use. No changes are proposed to the required discretionary findings that would be needed for those permits. Decision-makers would still be able to place specific conditions of approval on the project as the use is not permitted by right. A modification to existing legal non-conforming facilities would be processed at an administrative level with a minor modification to the original entitlements if all development standards, as proposed, were met. Otherwise, that request would be raised to the planning commission for their review. Self-storage facilities are recognized as a use which is needed in the community. However, provisions to allow their use must be balanced with the general plan's policies and the economic development strategic plan. Self-storage facilities are not economic generators, and they compete with commercial and industrial properties for development opportunities. The proposed self-storage regulations attempt to elevate the self-storage facilities available to the city's residents to the highest industry standards, while also limiting the availability of land for self-storage facilities to prioritize the growth of the city's economic engines. Allowing but restricting self-storage facilities is consistent with the commercial and industrial goals and policies as set forth in the city's general plan. In terms of notification, we wanted everyone to know that the city did notify the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association of the proposed specific plan amendments, and the city contacted all 15 of the existing self-storage operators in the city and additional developers and brokers who had identified themselves as interested in developing self-storage facilities. After the moratorium was adopted, the self-storage industry did not reach out to staff to discuss potential amendments. However, on September 12th and 13th of this year, staff reached out to the existing operators and the self-storage developers that had contacted the city, and we invited them to a meeting on September 23rd where staff shared the proposed code revisions. Notification for the planning commission's and city council's public hearings were conducted in compliance with the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, and specifically, public notices were sent to all existing operators and those same developers that contacted the city, and we sent those out on three separate occasions. No written correspondence was received prior to the planning commission's public hearing, but two speakers did show up at the planning commission hearing representing the existing operators, and they did oppose the regulations. Prior to tonight's city council public hearing, additional written correspondences have been received, and they were distributed in the supplemental packets. As mentioned, staff suggested some alternative ordinance language to be provided to existing facilities, which would allow an option of either providing a caretaker unit or a security system approved by the police department, and language was suggested to clarify that an existing facility can be reconstructed if it's involuntarily destroyed. In staff's review, the project has been determined to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to the sections that are identified on the screen. If you flip to the guidelines, it would say that CEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, the activity is not subject to CEQA. And staff finds, and the planning commission found, that the proposed code amendments will restrict -- excuse me, will restrict the construction of new self-storage facilities to the M1 and M2 zones, subject to future discretionary permit entitlements. As the future proposed developments would be subject to their own project-specific environmental review, the municipal code amendment and specific plan amendment would not have a significant effect on the environment and is therefore exempt from further environmental review. So in conclusion, the proposed municipal code amendment and specific plan amendment will provide implementation of regulations specific to the self-storage industry, considering both the city's general plan and the economic development strategic plan, peer jurisdictions' adopted regulations, and industry trends. And staff recommends, I'm not going to read everything on the screen, but that you find that the project is indeed exempt from CEQA, and that you move forward with the first reading of the ordinance tonight and continue the item to a second reading on a future calendar. And with that, staff is available for any questions that you may have, so thank you.
Thank you very much, a nice presentation. Just for full disclosure, I know I had an ex parte communication with one of the owners of a self-storage, just so everybody knows that, but if there's any other questions or questions of staff--
Yes.
--from Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Yeah, you put down the per capita number of self-storage units in cities. Is there supposed to be some optimum level of per capita self-storage?
Mayor Protam Jones, thank you for the question. The industry did not share any sort of per capita metric with staff. They mentioned that there is one, but they never provided that to us.
Well, I noticed you include that in the material, and I just wondered, by so doing, if you were indicating that we were either above or below some optimum level. You're not doing that, though, is that right?
Yeah. What we would share is that we are currently number one in the county in terms of the number of facilities, and we've been contacted by others that are interested in developing additional self-storage facilities. That seems to indicate that there's interest by the industry to continue developing new facilities here, and the regulations, as proposed, does allow for additional facilities to be constructed in the city.
Well, are you sort of hinting that we're about as high as we should be at this time? I'm just wondering what the purpose of including that in the packet material was.
As Scott mentioned, it's just to demonstrate where we, as a city, stand in terms of number of facilities in the county as opposed to population, and the intent of the ordinance is not necessarily to encourage more of the facilities. We haven't addressed this particular use in terms of land use in the city in a number of decades, so this is really an opportunity for us to become current with the current trends in the industry, and also identify appropriate locations for it, which will allow the city to move forward with the highest and best use of our most optimal land.
And I presume that was intended to contribute to our knowledge and understanding of the situation here. What exactly, would you describe a caretaker unit for me, please?
Mayor Protam Jones, thank you. A caretaker is simply an apartment, and it's an apartment for someone who would be watching after the facility itself.
Oh, you're suggesting the person would live there, then?
That is what a caretaker unit is, yes.
Does it depend on the size? I mean, is there a ratio of size to having a unit or not? I mean, if you had a very small one, would you still need a caretaker unit?
We did not identify the size of the caretaker unit.
No, I mean, the size of the, how many spaces you have for storage. Is there some ratio of that to the need for a caretaker unit at that facility?
We did not identify a threshold for the number of units, storage units, that would require the caretaker unit. The required, the proposed regulations, as recommended with the supplemental packet, essentially would allow the developer the chance to either choose a, if they're expanding their facilities, do they want to provide a caretaker unit if they don't currently have one, or to put in a security system would be for the existing operators, or if a new facility is being proposed, we would look for a caretaker facility to be added to that, but we did not include a minimum threshold for when that kicks into play. It's just the way the regulations are written today, any new facility would require a caretaker facility.
So no matter what the size of a new proposal might be, whatever it was, big or small, it would require a caretaker unit, is that it?
Yes.
Mr. Jones, do you mind if I call on Mr. Adam for a minute, and then--
No, he wants to speak.
Of course, he always wants to speak. Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, let's see, so we have a million, 50,000 square feet of self-storage in the city, right? That puts us right at the top of self-storage cities in Ventura County, correct?
Based on the information provided to other cities, yes, and we believe that that's accurate.
Okay. And if I recall, what prompted this scrutiny is we had two proposals in front of us for another 300,000 square feet, and one of them, I think it was about 200,000, was pretty much prime property, commercial property around on the freeway, so there was thought that, you know, is that the highest and best use for that piece of property? So here we are, coming out of the moratorium and confronting some of those questions. I did want to ask you about this caretaker business. You had said in the presentation, the trend in the industry now is more along the digital side, so wouldn't it, would we be able to offer an either-or in that particular case? I mean, if law enforcement were to review their security systems and find them adequate, would that suffice versus having a full-time caretaker on premises?
Counselmember Adams, that is certainly a possibility, and there is proposed language in the supplemental packet that certainly leads down that way.
Okay. Yeah, I think, like you said, that is the trend in the industry, and I think Councilmember Jones brings up a good point about size as well, because if it happens to be a smallish project, perhaps the digital would be much more appropriate. All right, well, we'll, I'm sure we'll consider that as we get closer and closer to a resolution. Thank you.
Mr. McNamie?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the clarification on the caretaker unit. I am aligned with Councilmember Adam and Jones here that it should be up to the new construction as to if they want to make it automated, digitized, with police blessing, as per to a caretaker. That would be my direction on that. I need to ask a few questions here. You have put it down to a restriction of two acres maximum that this future development could accommodate, is that correct?
That is accurate.
And why are we doing that if we have acreage that highest and best use would be self-storage? Why are we not allowing that to occur? Why are we putting a cap on two acres? What's the purpose of that?
So it fits the city's development pattern is part of that answer, and part of the answer is to also retain the larger parcels for the city's economic generators consistent with our economic strategic plan.
And you kind of alluded to, and if I'm misstating, please clarify, in your presentation, that these are not income generators, per se, yet we get business tax out of it. Plus, as you look at any office space for any building, the reception area is not an income generator. The hallways are not income generators. The office in which the business transacts, that is where business is generated. But yet, all those other support locations of the reception, the hallway, the restrooms down the street, the elevator, all those support those businesses and generate income. And when we are inviting in biotech and other industry to come to the city, it would be smart, in my opinion, if I were the business owner, to not allocate huge square footage to storage of something at $3, $4, $5 a square foot, whereas I would want to have the storage that is much less expensive to store whatever I need to store as part of my business. So in ways, public storage-type facilities support the revenue stream that occurs here in the city. So I differ with you on that opinion. Could you clarify why these are not viewed as income generators?
Well, Councilmember McNamie, thank you for that question. Self-storage facilities in their own right do not generate a large income coming out of those properties, and nor do they create a high level of employment opportunities, and those employment opportunities that they do create are not high-income earners, if you will. So the secondary effects from those employees don't also spill out into the community. There clearly is a relationship between businesses that could rent space from these facilities for the very reasons that you suggest and mention. And again, these regulations that we're proposing don't preclude the development of a new self-storage facilities or make the existing ones go away. So what we're looking at is a balancing act. What are the future best, as we look into the future for the cities to really prioritize the economic growth engines of the city, how do we prioritize that? That's a question that I will leave to the city council to see if we got that right or not with the proposed regulations.
And again, I think we're saying in some ways the same thing, that yes, the actual site of the storage facility is not a huge job creator and so forth, but it is the support for other industry, other businesses, other services, other products that are generated or manufactured in our city. Is that a fair statement?
I think that can be a fair statement. Where I put in a little bit of an asterisk is the vast majority of the space that's used in self-storage facilities is for residential goods, if you will.
The other last point, this will be my third question, Mayor, so that way you keep me the three-question limit, is that we're putting these into industrial areas, correct?
Correct.
And yet, we're mandating that they make this some sort of economic hub by-- And yet, we're mandating that they make this some sort of economic hub by putting some sort of mixed use in front for the look that we want to attract activity. We're in an industrial area, how much activity can you have in an industrial area? And the other is, I don't want to compel businesses to put in some sort of retail-whatever site in front to make it, quote, "look good," which drives up the price of the project that in turn makes the space more expensive for our residents, all for the sake of looking pretty, when in fact, businesses going in there may wind up be vacant. So to me, from a businessman's standpoint, I would say that's, should be up to the storage unit facility, not for city to mandate that that should be there. What is the rationale, other than making it look pretty and we're trying to attract business to this industrial area? Why are we doing that?
Counselmember, back to me. So one of the reasons is to increase activity, as you said, to make it look nicer is part of it, eyes on the street is part of it. Activating the, activating the use can have secondary benefits to the other industrial properties around it as well. For instance, if there was a restaurant of some sort that went into it, it would be to the benefit of other nearby industry, industrial developments that may not have a restaurant nearby. There are facilities like this in our jurisdiction, there's a few of them, but not many. In other jurisdictions, you do have restaurants and retail operations that do pop up in industrial areas when they are provided. So there are opportunities. And the, the idea itself, generated by the industry itself, as we were looking at the industry's publications and we were looking at the industry's awards that they were giving out to their Facilities of the Year, they were highlighting on their own the mixed-use facilities. So as we reviewed those highlights, those accolades of the industry, we thought that made sense as a potential benefit to our community.
Is there any way we can make this a either/or situation for the developer that if you want to put in mixed use, it makes sense, it's going to be a survivable business, it's not going to sit vacant and create blight, it'll make it look pretty, that's your choice, business owner, that's your choice, developer, let you guys do that. An either/or situation, I think, would be more compatible with a free-market system. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. McNamie. Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Thank you. Thank you for the thorough presentation. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do have in industrial areas, we do have, as you mentioned, we have restaurants, we have other businesses that, that attract foot traffic in various industrial areas, including in Westlake Village and of course, then in Newberry Park. My question is, we're looking at the square footage for Thousand Oaks, we have over a million square feet, and you were looking at other cities for comparison. How, and we seem to be really doing slightly better than Simi Valley, but on average, what is the square footage of storage units for cities the size of 100,000 and 120, 130,000?
Counselmember Claudia, excuse me, De La Peña, my apologies. We couldn't find that statistic on our own, and the industry did not provide that to us, although they mentioned, again, that that is a metric that they use. So we simply reached out to our colleagues to try to see if we could figure it out, and the statistics that we shared on the screen was what we were able to gather from our fellow jurisdictions since the planning commission meeting.
I look at the Willow Lane property currently under construction, gorgeous, gorgeous ridge-view line that could have been, I don't know, maybe a restaurant or something else, and instead, it's a storage facility that is now grazing, will be grazing the ridge line above Willow Lane. So I just wanted to say really more as an observation than it is a question, is that it does make sense to me to have these restrictions in place. Also, regarding caretaker units, there are, I understand, smaller facilities that do have caretaker because they don't invest money into having the high-tech equipment. So would it not make sense to still retain the option of caretaker in this?
Counselmember Bill De La Peña, the way that the regulations are written, we do have the option for the existing facilities that we've proposed, and we look to council to give ultimate direction on how you would like to proceed with that.
But there are facilities that have a caretaker unit?
Yes, within the city of Thousand Oaks, absolutely.
Very good, thank you.
Just to be clear, on that, in the 5:00 p.m. supplemental, there is an item specific to this issue, giving council, if you so choose, the ability to do either/or, the security piece or the caretaker unit.
Yeah, thank you so much, and thanks for the questions, colleagues. Couple of questions for me, I think, and I appreciate that we're making some progress as far as the caretaker option of providing one. The question I guess I have is, we're going to be, have a kind of bifurcation here of older uses in, as existing non-conforming and then the new uses. On the existing non-conforming, I'm glad to see that we're able to, if somebody has a fire or an earthquake knocks a building down, that they can rebuild with the same use. If they were to sell the property to another vendor that is going to continue that use, is that possible?
Mayor Engler, that is correct. The land use entitlement runs with the land, not with the business owner. So if they sell the property and the use continues without a gap of six months or more, then that legal non-conforming status gets to remain with that property.
So we won't be encumbering the business with a, with a, an end date on the current use? That's good.
That's correct. There's no amortization period built into this code.
Okay, and then my second question has to do with the existing footprint on the, on these existing non-conforming buildings. They can build out to the existing footprint of the buildings or a, if I remember right, a 10% addition, but not both?
Mayor Engler, the way that the regulations are proposed today is allowing the 10% addition for the facilities, whether it's an internal expansion or if it's an addition on the outside of it. If the city council would like to expand that, that is absolutely something within the council's control, to allow it to expand to the full footprint of the building.
I would, I would think that'd be appropriate if somebody has an existing building that's vacant otherwise. The, another sort of corollary to that, we do have some existing buildings that are not air-conditioned. Would they be required to retrofit, or can they be existing non-conforming as well?
Mayor Engler, thank you for that question, too. So the existing non-conforming facilities, they get to stay exactly how they are today if they propose no modifications at all. If they propose modifications, then the part which would be expanded would be required to come up to the proposed operational standards, and they have an option of retrofitting of the other square footage in the, in the unit.
Thank you. And then just one quick question, if my colleagues will allow me, on, on the mixed-use frontage in the buildings. It seems that we're putting these buildings way out in the industrial areas, where the frontage may or may not support a retail in front. I think it's a good idea to do that because it will bring more activity to it. But in terms of some of my colleagues talking about, is this mandatory? I don't want to create a situation where it won't be economically feasible to even bring in new places if we, if we have that additional requirement. I think that these do have value for our community, just from the residential side. I think it was a 15% or so is business, which is a minor portion of it is business use. But they do serve a purpose, and I don't want to get to a regulation that keeps, keeps new places from coming in. Can you comment a little bit on, on the pluses and minuses of the residential, or not residential, the retail in front?
Sure. So Mayor Engler, again, thank you for that question. So as a reminder, today's existing code that we have in Thousand Oaks requires the office and retail component for self-storage facilities today. So that is the baseline that we're operating with. What we were proposing is expanding that to help generate further activity. So some of the existing facilities that we have, for instance, if we think about the Many Mansions project on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, that has the office front and center to try to generate some level of activity on that property. It's the same sort of idea, but in the industrial areas, and it is where the industry themselves have been trending. So that's where those ideas came from. Staff thought that was a good idea, but ultimately, it's the council's direction on what we ultimately will implement.
Thank you. One other question from our colleague, Mr. McNamie.
Do you really think it's going to be one other question, Bob? Not happening. I want to come back to the climate control. What city staff rationale on compelling climate control, and I assume that means air conditioning and heating, that one drives up the price of the facility, drives up the cost of storage, may not be needed for that particular storage product or service that's being provided there? In my opinion, it should be decided by the developer and the customer who comes in and uses that facility. For example, if you're storing cans of olives that you want to sell in your store, but you need a storage area because you can't, yes, climate control would be needed. But that would be decided between the developer, builder of this facility, and that customer. Where is we as city staff think that we should go in and tell them how to run their business? Share with me the rationale on that.
So Counselmember McNamie, thank you for that question, too. I'm going to jump back in time a little bit. When the moratorium itself was originally proposed back in January, the developers that came in and spoke to the city council at that meeting, talked about how air-conditioning was something needed for storing residential goods in their facilities for long-term wear and tear maintenance. So that was an idea that was shared directly with council from the industry. In addition to that, as we've looked at the industry regulations, the new facilities that are coming online nationally and in California have been including the conditioned space within their facilities. The industry publications also pointed out a number of niche industries that are being found, especially in California, for wine storage as something that's happening, as well as for the pharmaceutical industry. The supply of their goods, if you will, is something that needs air conditioning as well as humidity control. So the regulations that we have proposed mimic those and support those trends as we're looking into the future, as we're trying to provide storage for the forthcoming residential units that we're expecting in the city per the housing element, as well as the growth of the biotech industry that we're trying to support within the city as well.
Again, come back, come back to my question here, is that should this not decision be made between the customer and the facility owner for the amenities desired by the customer and provided by the owner? Because not everyone is going to store wine, or canned olives, or things that may need climate control. And yes, the industry may be saying that's the trend, we're heading towards climate control. I'd let that up to the developer and the customer to make that decision because they know best, and we shouldn't mandate it here at this level. Because if there's market demand for climate control, the developer will put it in. If the customer wants climate control, they will seek out those that do have it. And that's why I'm wondering, why are we being so, micromanaging the consumer and the developer here with that particular aspect of the regulation? Mr. Parker, I think you wanted to share something.
Right before you go in, Mr. Parker, just to make one additional point for the council, you know, when you are updating regulations in an area like this, and it doesn't happen that frequently at this granular level, but you generally go out and look at the industry best practices. So this is something that's an industry best practice, it's the pleasure of the council, right? If this is something that the industry has been pre-vocal about, usually want to establish what those best practices are, if the council wants to peel those back in some variety and do different things, that's the pleasure of the council.
Very good. Let me go to my next question. Is that okay, Mayor? Oh, thank you. Why are we doing this 1,000 square, square feet, or 1,000 feet from 101 center line? What's the rationale on that? Are we trying to cause more vehicle miles traveled by having it further back from the freeway? Because I think if you want to drop something off, the closer to the freeway actually would be better for a number of reasons. Not every business or homeowner wants to be near a freeway, but you're saying we have to be at least 1,000 feet from center line of 101, which is going to put it further back, greater vehicle miles. I'd rather put storage where the freeway air is not the greatest, right next to the freeway, because people aren't going to live in these, these storage units. What's the rationale there?
So there's a couple of different rationales here. So first and foremost, the biggest reason to put in the separation distance was to give the greatest visibility to our economic generators and our civic institutions. So we want our businesses that are going to generate the most amount of traffic and interest of the community to have that visibility, and let those that are also having the most number of visitor, visitors be the closest to the freeways. Our commercial businesses, our industrial developments, our tech industries that are growing, the number of vehicles and the number of individuals that are going to be visiting those facilities on a daily basis is going to be substantially higher than those visiting the self-storage facilities. So if you looked at it in the reverse, if we put the self-storage facilities on our main arterials and adjacent to the freeway, VMT might actually go up because we're going to put those other industries further away and make people travel further to get to those locations.
And if I may add to that, the 1,000-foot standard is consistent with our scenic highways ordinance and how it's applied in the general plan. So typically, it's consistent with what we would apply to other uses that follow along our scenic corridor. Additionally, as has been mentioned here this evening, what we're suggesting are industry best practices, which is what we do for all uses that come into the city. It just so happens that this is one that hasn't been updated for decades. So while it may seem like it's much different than what we have, it's just a product of not making regular updates to the standards in this particular code area.
Very good, thank you for clarifying that. Last one, this is my third.
We have three speakers waiting, so.
I'll make it quick. Some of the ones that are grandfathered in, that's why I'll refer to them, if that's okay with you, that already have existing facilities. If they had purchased this, purchased these properties already having some storage on there, but wanted to expand because they've got the acreage to do so, what restrictions do they have, what will they be facing? Because if I were the developer, the owner of that property, and I bought X acres, and I was currently using it, but with the idea of expanding onto the other acreage which is not developed yet, am I able to do that or not?
So Counselmember McNamie, the way that the current regulations are written would allow a maximum of a 10% expansion of the gross square footage of the building, up to 8,000 square feet is what's currently in the regulations. We're at council's direction if, if we're looking to change that. That's specifically for the self-storage use. The properties that we're talking about have a range of other uses that could also be proposed on them, and those development opportunities still are, remain on the property. So there is still economic expansion possibilities on the properties that are the grandfathered ones as we're looking forward.
So to do that, does that mean they have to come back to council for that request? Or is it already grandfathered in, they can do what they did before? How does that work?
For the existing facilities, if they want to expand by that 10%, it's a staff-level approval that's, that's granted.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. We do have three public speakers on this item. First up, we have Monica Merriman, followed by Tom Cohen and Ryan Letterman. Ms. Merriman, five minutes, Ms. Clerk.
Good evening.
That's correct.
My name is Monica.
My name is Monica Merriman, and I reside in Ventura, and our office is here in Westlake Village. I am the Executive Director of Cancer Support Community. We are on the corner of Hampshire and Townsgate, the 530 Townsgate that, Hampshire, sorry, that was mentioned earlier. Cancer Support Community has for 30-plus years provided comprehensive, high-quality... How's that? Oh, that's... I can hear myself now. We've provided high-quality educational and psychosocial supportive care services to the Thousand Oaks and Canejo Valley community, cancer patients, family members, the caregivers, and their children. All of these services are provided at no cost. Earlier this year, we were just 20 days from closing escrow with a self-storage developer when the moratorium was enacted. During the six months of design process and conversations with city staff, the buyer complied with all requested changes. The imposed moratorium forced the escrow cancellation, as mentioned, and we all now know the situation with the real estate market today. Cancer Support Community has been left in limbo. Because of the facility costs associated with the maintenance of our building and needed infrastructure upgrades to the Hampshire facility, Cancer Support Community needs to sell this property, move to a smaller, local location in the very near future in order to preserve our ability to provide optimal services to the community and for our own long-term financial viability. The sale of the building would have allowed us to reinvest some money into expanded programs that are very needed in our community, therefore serving more cancer patients and their families. We respectfully request the council reject staff's recommendation tonight and an exemption from the current Thousand Oaks self-storage moratorium to allow us to sell the 530 Hampshire property to more potential buyers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merriman. Next up is Mr. Cohen.
A lot of good discussion on a scintillating subject. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Tom Cohen. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm here tonight representing Public Storage, owner of the former Jaffra property. And we submitted a letter yesterday that is in your council packet that outlines our thoughts. Also want to let you know that Brian Miranda with Public Storage is here this evening and can answer industry-specific questions, should you have any. Public Storage has owned this 9.6-acre property for three years. At the time, it purchased the property from Jaffra, leased back approximately 50,000 square feet to Jaffra for a three-year period. The Jaffra building had already undergone a change prior to Public Storage's purchase when a self-storage operator subleased space and built out a portion of the building. Public Storage then built out all but the Jaffra-occupied portion and leased up that new space within six months. Public Storage then approached the city to expand due to evidence of high demand and was informed of the moratorium. So Public Storage has sat back waiting the outcome of the anticipated changes to the standards, which we're here tonight to discuss. Public Storage understands the city's desire to preserve the land for opportunities for productive uses that create jobs and spurs economic activity. They encounter that in every city that they work in. With that said, Public Storage has no qualms with the standards as they apply to new development of self-storage, to limit locations and to ensure it is built to the highest quality aesthetics that Thousand Oaks expects. Public Storage concern is in the way the new standards impact existing facilities. So we'd like to offer a couple of recommendations, and I've actually heard ideas of this explored tonight by the council members in their questions. First, the standard that allows expansion up to 10% or 8,000 square feet, and expansion of this size really doesn't make economic sense in that 8,000 square feet really nets 6,000 of rentable area. And with the added requirement for a caretaker's unit and ground-floor office, retail, or restaurant along the entire frontage, it makes expansion a non-starter for an existing facility. Second, we would respectfully ask the council to consider allowing expansion within the existing footprint of existing facilities. This allows empty interior space to be utilized and does not require any exterior change to the building facade. And last, we like the changes that staff has brought to your attention tonight as it relates to the caretaker requirement by allowing the applicant the option to provide either a caretaker unit or implement security measures satisfactory to the police department. Public Storage, as a matter of course, installs state-of-the-art security features in all of its facilities and believes staff's solution is a good one. And then the allowance to rebuild in the event of a destruction of the facility, I think that's a fair and reasonable change to the ordinance as well. We see these changes to the standards as being good for the city. The existing facilities are here for the long haul, and to allow these facilities the ability to expand within the existing footprint ensures that the city can service its residents and the business community's storage needs. And there's two additional points, just for clarification. In the chart in the staff report, it talks about facility square footage. It's already been aside. Our facility actually has 150,000 square feet, so we want to thank you for the additional 50,000. It identifies our spaces as having 200,000 square feet of storage. The other thing, there was a lot of discussion about the per capita. The per capita equilibrium that I think Councilmember Jones mentioned is somewhere between 10 to 15 square feet per person, which, based on the numbers I saw in the staff report, suggests there's still room for more. And you're allowing for that for the new facilities because you've identified about 30 parcels, but you have ready-made space now with existing facilities that have the room to build it within the facilities without changing the look of the facility at all. So to me, that's a change that I think warrants further discussion by the council, and we hope that you support that. I'm happy to respond to any questions that you may have. Mr. Miranda is also here. He can speak to specific industry things, questions, should you have those? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Next up on our speaker list is Ryan Letterman. Mr. Letterman.
Good evening, honorable council members, and my name is Ryan Letterman. I'm from the law firm Holland and Knight. I'm here representing cancer care communities. What you're hearing tonight is an effort by the fox to guard the hen house. Of course, the existing facilities don't want the competition. They're not going to be subject to the new regulations. This is a growing city. The city has a RENA obligation of 2,600 new dwelling units coming up. You have a thriving biotech industry over here. There is going to be a need for new storage facilities to serve your residents and your businesses. What this regulation does is it prevents new facilities that are going to harm the residents of the city and the businesses of the city. This is a solution in search of a problem that will only help the existing self-storage facilities who are going to be exempt. They can modify their facilities and still be exempt. We are troubled tonight because we are a stakeholder. We have been working with the city, or we're working with the city, for months on a design to seek city approval. Yet during this process of 10 months, there's been no outreach whatsoever to this organization and their significant concerns. We strongly feel that these regulations are going to do harm to your constituents, and there's no logical reason why there needs to be retail in an industrial area, or why there's going to be a successful restaurant in an area that's closed after nighttime. It's illogical. You're putting in caretakers in industrial areas? And the whole point of having an industrial area is to prevent residential uses. So it's illogical what you're doing. It's illogical to separate this out from freeways. It's going to increase vehicle miles traveled. It's also going to increase vehicle miles traveled for having residents travel to other cities. We just heard from the speaker before that you're not even at the maximum of the per capita. There's been no market analysis over here. This is a misguided effort at economic development that will only harm the city. So we respectfully request that you deny, do not approve, these proposed regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that's our last public speaker on this item, so we can close the public hearing. And we'll turn it over to our staff for comments on the speakers, and then open up to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to begin, in regards to comments related to a potential application, I just want to clarify that all application fees were refunded to that particular applicant. That's also the reason they were not contacted as part of preparation for this particular item, because there was no active application or applicant on that particular site for this. Additionally, the location in question is along a primary arterial highway, which is typically land that we've identified as a city, which is within our purview, to place our highest and best uses. As staff has discussed throughout the comments on this particular item, use such as this is destination-based, so they don't need to be located on a major arterial in order to thrive, which is part of staff's design in terms of presenting the ordinance to the council here this evening.
The only other couple of comments that I'll make is some public comments that had given stated it was illogical for us to put residential uses within industrial areas, and it's not atypical for industrial facilities to have caretaker units in this jurisdiction or in others. It's something that does exist. So it's different than putting a full-scale apartment. This is a single unit that would be located on these buildings. And in terms of putting in other uses in the industrial zones, we find that there are restaurants and other things that exist within our city today that are operating. On one end of the spectrum, in the Renter Canejo area, there is a restaurant that primarily serves breakfast and lunch for their clientele. And on the other side of the city, over in Westlake Boulevard, just for another example, we have breweries that are existing that could locate into a retail facility of sorts. So there is a range of possibilities that are here, and we see that the regulations as proposed are not illogical. And again, in terms of expansion of additional facilities, there are sites that could be developed, and there is a market demand, so it would make sense that we would see something pop up in the future in a place that would be appropriate and not harmful to our economic generators. So I don't know if there's any other staff comments we have.
Yeah, just one more comment. Just in terms of the use itself, it's not something that the ordinance is trying to encourage or make more robust. And as a result of that, that's why a market study or analysis is not appropriate for this particular use. As staff has mentioned on a couple of occasions prior to this evening, we asked for some additional information from the industry, which was not provided. So for our purposes here, the appropriate information has been provided for us to receive direction from council on how to proceed forward with the ordinance.
And I have one additional comment as well. Excuse me. You know, just a reminder why we're here, why the city council adopted the moratorium in the first place. Cities grow, and they change over time, and cities regularly change their zoning codes and their general plans. We're in the process of doing that right now, and they do make those changes based on current priorities and needs of a community. So when a city does that, it is very common to create legally non-conforming uses. Our city has various legally non-conforming uses in our city, and cities across the entire state does that. It's permitted under our state police powers. It's also authorized and identified under the state planning and zoning law. It doesn't mean that you have to close your doors if you're just deemed a legally non-conforming use. They can continue to operate. The one thing I want you to remind you is that most cities, including our city, do not allow expansions of legally non-conforming uses. And that's because expansion of it actually conflicts with your current land use policies. You're amending your zoning code because you are placing a higher priority on certain types of uses and less priority on other types of uses. So most cities, including the city, do not allow any type of expansion of a legally non-conforming use. In this case, however, staff actually drafted specific language allowing minimal expansion, 10,000 square feet, or, I'm sorry, 10% or 8,000 square feet, for a legally non-conforming use. Council can direct staff to change that language if they so desire, but again, it goes back to the reason why staff is recommending these things. When we update our zoning codes, we always evaluate industry best practices. These regulations are decades old, so they are very different from what is currently on the books. But they represent industry best practices. At the end of the day, it's ultimately up to the five of you what you want for these types of uses in the city and where you want them to be located.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I completely understand the need for the moratorium. You know, we were facing a proliferation of self-storage units throughout the city. We have a million 50,000 square feet, and at the time, another 300,000 square feet was being proposed. That was a 30% increase of what we have already. So it was time to step back and take a look at the situation. I certainly think Thousand Oaks has done its share in providing self-storage to their residents, and there's nothing that says that even if there's a demand, we have to... It's our responsibility to fill that demand, but I certainly think with over a million square feet, we've certainly gone a long way to do that. But I think we're at the point now where we do have to step back and look at this. You know, as far as the property, the Cancer Center property, to me, there's a location problem there. You're right across the street from our Chamber of Commerce, and right across the street is the Kmart Project, or TL Ranch it's being called, which is going to be an exceptional mixed-use project, provide a lot of housing for the city. I can only think that with that project there, it could do nothing but increase the value of your property. And I'm not sure that a self-storage unit is the highest and best use for that piece of property considering what's around it. You know, as I look at what's being proposed, I would say that if you really want to get down to the nuts and bolts of it, I'm prepared to make a motion here, but I think this business of the caretaker versus the digital, I think that that should be optional. I think that one or the other will be fine, number one. Number two, and I think the mayor and Councilmember McNamee had a little bit of concerns about this retail in the front, and whether or not that was really a viable idea. I have my doubts about that, too, to be honest with you. So as Mr. McNamee mentioned, maybe I'd consider making that optional. But I do think that we need to limit new ones. I like the idea of breaking it down to these 30 particular sites. And we have some very important sites in here in town, and we have some businesses that are building, and self-storage doesn't fit in a lot of the spots that it could fit unless we change it. So I think the 30 sites are fair, and I also think that... Now getting to the existing sites, I'm good with the 8,000 square feet or the 10% for an existing site to expand, but I also think it's fair if there is an existing site that it can expand its use within the footprint that's there now. And that doesn't mean that it can go up another story or build accessory buildings, but if it's within the footprints that's there now, and there's some existing space that isn't being used for whatever reason, it seems to me that that's not really going to change the equation so much if that is, in fact, converted to self-storage.
May I ask a question on this? Because it's one where, let's say you have acreage that is unused right now, it has no purpose, but could be converted over into storage that is the mission and purpose of that company.
of that company. Their hands then would be tied because they'd have to stay within the existing footprint and that area, that acreage, that land remains vacant. Do you follow the concern?
I hear what you're saying, but I wouldn't go that far with this motion I'm about to make. I would say that that's an actual expansion beyond the existing footprint. And to me, it's got to be an either-or. Either you're going to go with the 8,000 square feet and/or the 10%, or expand within your existing footprint and don't go beyond that.
But I follow your concern, and I'm thinking how to frame this, because if you've got a facility right now that's landlocked, they can't do any more than what is proposed with the 8,000 square feet. But if you've got a facility that's got more acreage that could expand, why are we tying their hands? Could we do it if they've got the acreage to do it, or within, the expansion should be within their property lines? Do you follow my thought process here?
I think the expansion should be within the existing footprint. I think anything beyond that is contrary to the overall intent of what we're trying to do here.
The other is, again, is 8,000 square foot, given the cost of construction, really viable, really feasible? Or is it just a number out there that no one's going to be able to use because 8,000 square foot's going to cost too much, and you basically have stifled any expansion?
Well, it's 8,000 or 10%.
To a maximum, I believe.
Because again, the intent here is to not necessarily expand any greater than what we already have and limit any new facilities to these 30 sites that have been, you know, designated, that aren't necessarily on a 1-on-1 corridor or along the TL Boulevard. Of course, you know, the staff is suggesting we ban them within the TL-specific plan to begin with.
Okay, I follow what you're saying.
So I think-
Have you thought about the other aspect of compelling them to do climate control?
Mr. McNamee, why don't we get the motion out?
If he puts the motion out, then we can't modify it.
It's okay. It's good to discuss it.
No, you can modify a motion.
You can make an amendment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you're right. Thanks, Bob. Why don't I get that motion out then, that, okay. So I would move the staff recommendations with these changes, if you want to call it that.
Amendments.
That we make the caretaker and digital business optional, all right? Depending on what people feel is appropriate.
Mr. Adams, you can also-
That we make the retail in the front.
You may want to reference the language in this 5 o'clock supplemental, specific to that, as part of the motion.
Oh, okay. We'll use that.
I can clean it up. Let's just get it on the record.
Claudia's got it highlighted here for me. Beautiful. Provide a caretaker unit or provide, well, door alarm surveillance camera, I call it digital. So basically that, either-or. That we make the retail in the front optional, and that when it comes to expansion for an existing site, and this would be either-or as well, that you can either go to the 8,000 feet or 10%, whichever is less, isn't that the way staff put it? Or if you can expand within your existing footprint and not go beyond that, you could avail yourself of that option.
May I enter this conversation?
Absolutely.
Hold on one second. Do we have the motion?
Oh, that would be my motion.
Well, can we also get in the motion, staff is also recommending the additional language with respect to reconstruction of an intentionally destroyed building. Is that part of your motion, or are you not interested in adding that?
Oh, right, right. Yeah, if a site's demolished, then that would mean-
Under traditional nonconforming use law, you cannot rebuild it.
That's right.
Staff is recommending that you add language that would allow it to be rebuilt.
I would add that.
So you want that.
I would add that. That's correct. Although, I mean, let's face it, most of these operators are going to be there for pretty much forever. But regardless, but you're right. If, for whatever reason, the site's demolished or changed, that we're not going back to another storage site. Right?
No. What staff is proposing is that if a legally nonconforming use, in other words, an existing building, an existing self-storage facility is destroyed by fire, let's say.
Yes, okay.
Under our current zoning code, they would not be able to rebuild it. What we are suggesting is adding language that would allow them to rebuild it, even though it's legally nonconforming.
Oh, I got that wrong then.
Yeah.
Okay, that would allow them to rebuild it. Okay, everybody's nodding their head. Come on now. All right, got that. Add that.
And then the final aspect would be on the, did you speak to the retail portion?
Optional.
Make it optional. Okay, thank you.
Optional, and also caretaker versus digital, optional.
And just one additional point of clarity, to make sure I heard it correctly. When you talk about expanding an existing building footprint, you're talking about on that parcel.
Say that again, sorry.
When you talked about expanding within existing building footprint, you're talking about on that parcel.
Right, expanding the use within the existing footprint. That's all.
Or 10% or 8,000 on that existing parcel. What you're not, what you don't want to do is encourage more land assemblage so they can expand on subsequent parcels.
Exactly. Thank you. That's exactly right. It's an either-or. Ed? Oh, sorry, Mayor.
Are you done, Mr. Adams? Very good. I think we have a motion. Let me call on Mr. McNamee first, because he is before Ed.
I just wondered if Mr. Adams would entertain a friendly amendment to say that climate control is also optional to the developer-owner of the facility, so that way the developer decides, as well as the customer who will be using that facility, that we don't mandate it, but it's optional if they want it.
Yeah, I don't know about that. Isn't that climate control kind of important?
Well, it depends on what you're storing in there.
That's what I mean.
And that's up to the market. So if you're storing papers, bicycles, things of that nature, climate control's not important. But if you've got a winery out in Simi Valley and you want to store wine over here, yes, climate control would be important. So it also drives up the price of the facility, which makes it more expensive to build and to have future units. Plus, it should be up to the consumer and the developer to make that choice, not us as a council to tell them, climate control, when I'm storing a paper, some bicycles, and a car?
Are you proposing that as an amendment?
As a friendly amendment, oh, yeah.
No, I see your point. I mean, I'm not in the business to drive up costs and make things more difficult. Maybe, can I get an expert opinion on that? Not to say that you're not an expert, of course, but did staff already address that? Is there some compelling reason that we should mandate climate control?
Councilmember Adams and the full council, the testimony that you received when the moratorium was originally proposed in January, those that were here on the industry were talking about the importance of climate control, even for residential furniture and those type of things, as part of their testimony. And that need, that future best management practice that we're seeing, is reflective in the industry publications for where they're going, and the new facilities that are existing have also been climate-controlled.
Uh-huh. So that's best practices in the industry right now?
That is what we're experiencing, yes.
Does that add a lot of cost to a unit, or self-storage?
I can't speak to the cost, but as Scott mentioned, it's a current best practice in the industry to do so, but ultimately, that provision is up to the council to decide if that's something they want to include or not. If it's not a requirement of the ordinance, just because it is a best practice, the operators may just go ahead and do that on their own.
Well, do you think the operators would have any reason to not use climate control if it was necessary?
I'll put it a different way. As we have engaged with the operators, when we met with them in September, and when they came to the planning commission, and even tonight, no one specified that as an issue.
Uh-huh.
So there's-
Well, you know what? I get what you're saying. What do you think about that, Claudia?
Well, hold on, hold on. Mr. Jones had-
Mr. Jones, sorry.
I think-
Sorry, Ed.
Is it all right if I?
Well, maybe we could all discuss this climate control business.
Well, I, you know, your motion, I think, had a lot of good ideas and things I agree with.
Thank you.
I don't know if I understand the motion completely. I'll tell you my position, and that is, I agree, I think the retail ought to be optional, and I think the caretakers dwelling ought to be optional. I can't, this is self-storage, right?
Yeah.
I'm trying to envision a typical eight-hour day of a caretaker if he lives there in a building that is self-utilized. I mean, I just don't know why anybody thought of that originally, but I'm not, you know, I'm not here to be critical.
As long as it's optional.
So would you restate the motion, please?
Oh, yes.
Do you want me to restate the motion for you?
Sure.
So the motion on the floor right now is to approve staff's recommendation, the municipal code amendments, with the following amendments. As proposed by staff in the supplemental, to provide a caretaker slash security camera system upgrade option, so either you can choose to construct a caretaker unit or have other security measures.
That's good.
Make the retail mixed-use component optional as well.
That's good.
To allow either an expansion of 10% or 8,000 square feet on an existing parcel or within an existing building footprint on that parcel with no maximum, it's whatever the building footprint is. And to allow, as proposed by staff in the supplemental, rebuild for destroyed buildings.
Wow.
If it is a nonconforming use.
I think she got it.
She's good.
I agree. I'm through.
Ms. Bill DeLaPeña first.
I'm glad that Scott mentioned the storage that we have on Thousand Oaks Boulevard and the front office is an office for Many Mansions. That was part of a deal that, how old is it now, 10 years? I can't remember about. They donated $1 million in order to make that deal happen and provided that office to Many Mansions. And that is the sort of collaboration that we need in this community, that we could have maybe one of the other nonprofits also take advantage of the storage facility in the industrial area. It doesn't have to be big, small, and offer that as a public benefit. So I, it was wonderful. It was the first time that we had such a proposal before us at the city, and it was embraced. It was a fantastic idea. And I would like to see that repeated in our community for, with the existing storage facilities or any future storage facilities. So yes, it's a good idea to make it optional, but wouldn't it be great if we really try to maximize the opportunities that we have here with a public-private partnership? That is what I'm getting at. It doesn't have to be mixed-use restaurants or anything like that. It could be office space to a nonprofit organization.
As a condition of approval?
As a condition of approval, for example, yes.
My challenge with that is you're now compelling these public storage facilities now to become property managers of retail offices and so forth, which is not their mission. That's not their purpose. Let it be optional. Let them decide if they want to do that or not.
This has worked really well for Many Mansions, and we have Mr. Strater here in the audience. It's worked really well.
And they're going to put these in industrial area, this is, you're talking Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which is the middle of downtown Thousand Oaks.
Where we shouldn't have storage facilities, but we do.
So it's very different when you're putting it in industrial areas where it's out of the way and no one's going to see it. That's my point.
Well, we have-
So it may work well in some areas, in other areas it may not. Thus, the optional is Mr. Adams is suggesting.
We do have schools in the industrial area. We do have other uses in the industrial area. So it's really not uncommon to do that. When we hear industrial, it's really not all industrial. There are many other uses.
And we have churches in the industrial.
And we have churches in the industrial area, absolutely.
I think what you're suggesting removes the optional part, does it not?
I'd like to see a public-private benefit to this. I mean, I think it's great. We have a wonderful example of how it's working.
That would be fantastic. I don't know if I'd make it mandatory, though. Isn't that what you're suggesting?
As a condition of approval, how would we phrase that, Mr. Powers?
Maybe I'll just take a stab. So that was reached, as I recall, it's been a while, that maybe Tracy can clarify, but I believe that was arrived at with a development agreement on the, for the Many Mansions item. So certainly, in the development process, staff could work to encourage, cajole that type of use in the frontage. And, you know, the whole reason behind that, and you made mention to it, I think it's important, when everybody says mixed-use, you immediately think, mixed-use has a relation to residential mixed-use, where you have restaurant or yoga studios or things like that. I think in the industrial area, much more likely to see an HVAC contractor, a plumbing office, or, you know, perhaps other types of uses within there. And so, and the main reason behind that was really derived at activating the front rather than just having an electronic gate that opens onto the frontage. So, but again, we, in the development process, we're always seeking to sort of get the highest quality project built, and would obviously continue to do that in these circumstances as well.
Thank you.
Like Drew says, staff could certainly advocate for something like that.
Actually, we have a friendly amendment on the floor, and wanted to find out, Mr. Adams, if you want to make that climate control optional or not.
Oh, the climate.
Sorry, bring it back around to climate.
The climate.
What do you think about?
And just for clarification, the climate would apply only to new facilities going forward. It would not be, that would not be a requirement for existing facilities.
Oh, no.
I'm saying as per regulator right now.
Correct, we've got it, yeah.
It is a best practice.
So you think we should mandatory the-
I think for new construction, yes. It's a best practice, what do you call it, best?
Best practice.
Best practice.
Best practice.
I think I'll probably stick with the climate.
Can I jump in as well here?
What's that, Bob?
Can I jump in as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
Please.
Yeah, I think the climate control, I think, is probably best practice going forward for these future businesses. That's probably something we want to encourage. In terms of the frontage, mixed-use, and as Mr. Powers says, could be anything from offices to businesses to restaurants or whatever, that should be an option, I believe. We shouldn't mandatory that because that may preclude future self-storage, and that is an item that's needed in our community. I would highly encourage all future self-storage to follow the Many Mansions model, because that creates a community benefit to them and also activates their front to some respects. As far as the having a caretaker on scene, as long as the security arrangements are such that the police department approves it, I would say that that's something that we should go for. Either-or would be fine, as long as the police are happy with the security arrangements for that. So I think we do have a motion on the floor with a friendly amendment. Mr. Adams, are you going to accept the friendly amendment?
Yeah, I think I'll go with the climate control as is, with all due respect.
That's fine, it's just open for discussion, and that's just the way it rolls out.
Appreciate you bringing that up, though.
Very good. Colleagues, any other items or any other questions? Very good. Let's vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill DeLaPeña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Angler?
Yes.
And Mayor, that motion carries 5-0, and I do have an ordinance title to read into the record. It's an ordinance amending the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, SP 20, and the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code by adding Section 9-4.2528 and Article 25 to Title IX, Chapter IV. Amending Section 9-4.202 and Article II to Title IX, Chapter IV. Amending Sections 9-4.2105 and 9-4.2106 and Article 22 to Title IX, Chapter IV. And amending Section 9-4.2402 and Article 24 to Title IX, Chapter IV. To modify existing standards and establish new development and zoning standards related to self-storage, mini-storage, and similar uses in certain zones, MCA 2022-70571, SPA
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Can we take five, Mayor?
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody. I'm sorry for that break, but we'll be back as soon as we can.
Let's call the meeting back to order. If I can get my council members' attention, we'll go back to our next item. Our next item has to do with our building standards and code. And if you can open the session, Ms. Rodriguez.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item 8B, 2022 California Building Standards Code with local amendments, MCA 2022-70456. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Four individuals have presented speaker cards. And pursuant to council standards, speakers will have five minutes.
Thank you so much. And we do have presenting tonight Mr. Jesse DeAnda to present the program. And also available for questions is Calvin Parker again. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council.
May I suggest something? Could he use a different mic? I think there's a flaw in that mic.
We tested it during the break.
Good evening, members.
We just need to pull it close here.
I noticed that too. I had trouble understanding Scott.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah, that's good.
It's better.
Perfect, thank you, thank you for clarifying that. Good evening, members, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is Jesse DeAnda. I'm your city building official, here to present to you the California Building Standards Code. A pretty routine process that is occurring every three years. What the building code is, is essentially California Title 24, California Code of Regulations. It is adopted every three years. And every year, we do receive annual updates from the state associated with major emergency upgrades, clarifications, or requirements. Title 24 does include 12 California codebooks that are presented to you today for adoption of recommendation. Little bit about the process, just to be clear. It is a process that is pretty lengthy in nature. It is a code development process that is established at international level. It is taken and adopted locally at the California State Department level. And ultimately codified for the implementation of codes July 1st of 2022. We have six months as a city to adopt or make local amendments to maintain Thousand Oaks' requirements effective by January 1st of 2023. In reality, that six-month period leaves us with about three to four months of review, understanding, and modifications which are being presented to you today through ordinance. The purpose of today is to adopt the 2022 California State Building Codes that will become effective January 1st. Little bit of background, typically this ordinance requires the repeal and removal of the current standards of 2019 California Building Codes. In all disciplines, natures as listed on the screen here, which is the California Building Code, residential codes, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and other administrative codes that are necessary. The ordinance does include and amend back into the 2022 version the previous Thousand Oaks local amendments. In order for these local amendments to carry forward, they are required to be equally or more restrictive than the state standards as minimums. And Thousand Oaks can always make those more restrictive as necessary or deemed appropriate. These amendments must be based on special local conditions that are climatic, geologic, and topography-type statuses, and that will be explained in the near future here. These findings for local amendments are contained in the preamble of the draft ordinance, and that is identifying the reasons for the local needs to change. And they include climatically, the requirement to address and mitigate the Santa Ana winds as it relates to fire spread and proper fire conditions that will definitely be a hazard for our city to defend against. Through topography, the fact that we are surrounded by hillsides in nature identifies water drainage issues for hundred-year storms, major flooding events, and things of that nature, which we also take into consideration and carry those local amendments forward. And lastly, the element of California, we are in an earthquake zone in the city of Thousand Oaks. And also specifically to Thousand Oaks, we do have expansive soils that are very common in the area. And we have structural amendments associated with provisions to defend against those hazards should they hit the city of Thousand Oaks in the future. The objective is to take these states, update them, and change the requirements. You'll see that the 2022 California Codes by default have many new fire-resistant requirements that are implemented. They're essentially addressing fire-treated materials, identifying non-combustible requirements, preventing buildings from burning further, especially in wildfire season. And ultimately, to adopt the compliance of requirements regardless of the code standards. The objective here is to ensure that all buildings meet the minimum safety standards of the state and those local amendments established within the hazard conditions of Thousand Oaks. The seismic provisions are required and updated to enhance due to the soil conditions and of course, the earthquake hazards in the state of California. The state also did identify and clarify the ability for folks to understand and use the building area height limitations based on the fire materials that are being proposed and the high criteria established for proper egressing of such buildings should they be proposed. Building existing requirements are clarified in general through all books that were mentioned in the previous slides, and there are far too many to mention today. One of the highlights that I would like to bring to attention is the California Updates to the Energy Criteria and Energy Requirements. The Energy Code established a new multifamily residential standard. Previously, originally, in current standards, there is a residential, and there is a residential/commercial use for what we call high-rise residential. In 2022, there is specific provisions and chapter dedicated to multifamilies that would include condominiums, apartments, and mixed-use properties. Also, the code now identifies mandatory all-electric-ready buildings for new construction. It establishes new energy storage systems, which is your battery backup of energy systems, as requirements. It increases indoor air quality requirements, and ultimately also requires electric vehicle readiness and electric vehicle installation on certain projects. How does this affect the homes and our businesses? As these Energy Code ramp up and they become more stringent based on state minimums, they essentially start establishing energy budgets. The contractors, developers, property owners have the ability to modify their designs to stay within an energy budget to ensure that they're not exceeding energy requirements based on the design being proposed for development. The fact that homes will be electric-ready will set the pace and allow for less cost-invasive construction in the future for retrofitting. That will essentially make that opportunity a lot more feasible financially. And of course, installation would go a lot faster. It does increase kitchen ventilation requirements to ensure that there is proper ventilation within the air home, with the home of the air, to ensure that it's better quality overall. And ultimately, what we have learned based off requiring PV photovoltaic panels as a requirement in 2019, the Energy Commission and state realized that there was an exception to be made for small amounts of PV that were required by the code due to cost-prohibitive ness of installing large equipment for a small panel energy generation. And so they pulled and created an exception for that category for single-family residential. On the businesses side, we're establishing combined solar PV and battery standards. This is going to be key to future energy standard requirements that the Energy Code is and the Energy Commission at the state level is moving towards to comply with the various state laws, assemblies, and Senate bills that are chartering us towards a more energy-efficient California. It also establishes the energy standards for commercial greenhouse gases at the end of the day. That's another version and another element associated with indoor air quality, but also using less chemicals and things a little bit more natural within the actual commercial materials for construction. Lastly, it improves the efficiency standards for building envelopes, which really is, again, identifies the ability for folks to design buildings in different ways to still achieve design criteria that they're interested in while not losing the energy efficiency required. So if they choose to install something that is less energy efficient, the objective is that the budget will be offset in other areas of the building materials. The main local amendments that you're seeing with the city of Thousand Oaks, changing the California minimum standards, is to maintain previous local amendments. We're bringing those forward. And where the state code has met the threshold and the requirements of Thousand Oaks, those items were eliminated, but they are equivalent at the end of the day. They incorporate existing requirements into new technologies. Solar panels will be explained a little bit more in detail here as a main component of what the local amendment process has been over the last couple of months that we were working on developing the ordinance proposed here for you today. It does incorporate and bring into the energy housing and tiny home provisions that need to be established as new minimum standards should those be proposed within the city of Thousand Oaks. In clarifying the local amendments, this is a perfect example of what we had. In 2019, we actually had a Class A fire rating requirement of all roofs. It's the highest fire rating requirement, obviously due to the fire hazards that we had come through the city in previous histories of years. Now, because of new technology, solar panels, we are incorporating that same Class A high-fire rating requirement into the plastics and metals of panels. It does not increase panel costs of installation. The construction industry has already maintained and does provide Class A panels as it is today as a competitive price. Members of the City Council, today's recommendation is to introduce the ordinance to adopt the 2022 California Building Codes, including the local amendments and the required findings per state law. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you so much. Good job for having been a practitioner of codes in my prior life. Codes are very complex and very, very necessary, though. I used to tell my students when I was teaching this class at City College, behind every code is usually some type of bad thing that happened. Fatality, fires, those types of things. I appreciate what you've done is going through these codes, trying to make sure that we have the most up-to-date and applicable codes we can have. So thank you for that.
My pleasure, happy to do so.
Very good. Now, questions for my colleagues? Ms. Bill de la Peña.
Thank you. We have a letter here in the supplemental packet at 2:30. And maybe next time, we can get copies of both supplemental packets, since I only have the 5 o'clock here. Why not use this opportunity here to meet the electrification reach codes?
There's a variety of reach codes out there at the moment. First and foremost, as I mentioned, in the timeline that we have to adopt minimum state codes and maintain the local amendments, the staff didn't think it was appropriate for us to make decisions on the electrification and/or any other reach code option that is out there to establish sustainability within the city of Thousand Oaks. Ultimately, we will be looking at this. This is not the one and only chance. It will be something that we are addressing through our general plan amendments and the climate action hearing process, the climate action plan process, to establish this in a more holistic process of establishing not only the electrification possibilities, but possibilities for additional envelope opportunities to make very good insulated homes and buildings. That's another reach code that is existing at the moment. Water conservation, gray water use, and the like as a whole package, as opposed to individually selecting one element, which is popular, no doubt, and very much necessary within the city of Thousand Oaks, but ultimately to be reviewed as a whole package at the direction of our council.
So according to the letter from the Community Environmental Council, there are 60 California jurisdictions, including the County of Ventura, Ojai, Santa Barbara, and the city of Santa Barbara, that have already adopted ordinances.
So if I may, so reach codes in general, not just in one area, in multiple areas, as Mr. DeAnda mentioned, is a policy process that we're actually going through with the update of our general plan. So part of that, there's outreach and there's collaboration amongst industry professionals and also members of the community. And that's a process that we're going through as part of our general plan update process. We also have a unit dedicated to sort of sustainability practices in the city that are also working on goals and policies in that particular area. So while tonight's item is to update the building code, which is our base standard for doing so, to keep us in compliance with state requirements, we're continuing to move forward and work on those reach codes as the letter indicated.
And what is the timeframe for that? And I see Dr. Cox coming up. I know she's our sustainability master here.
Thank you, Mrs. Cox.
Yeah, so yeah, thank you for these questions, and certainly very relevant. As Mr. DeAnda and Mr. Parker pointed out, these will be policy decisions that will come with the general plan, but very specifically with the Climate and Environmental Action Plan. And as you know, we're working on both those plans in parallel. They're in the draft stage, and then they'll go through the environmental review. So in the first six months of next year is when we expect to be bringing those drafts to council, and we'll be doing stakeholder review output. We'll be inviting the community to, you know, have input on those different measures. So although this would be an opportunity to do perhaps, you know, one of those reach codes, we certainly would not have time to do that as a comprehensive package. And it's just better addressed when we have a chance to do the modeling of all the different reach code options together and present that as a package to the council.
Thank you.
That's the plan.
Thank you, yes. Any other questions for my colleagues? Very good. Yeah, that was going to be my question. Thank you for bringing it up, Ms. Bill de la Peña. If this is the proper time to address any reach codes? I understand that we're in the process of looking at those right now. Will, I guess my question now is, even with these new electric codes and the green code, does that bring us closer to the state goal of net zero in '45?
Yes, it does. And the pattern historically has been from the Energy Commission to start identify the readiness and ultimately create the requirements in later versions of the code. Please be clear in understanding that this can be done now if somebody decides to propose it. We're just not mandating it to be uniform across the entire city as a minimum requirement for the moment, until it's reviewed as a package.
No, I think I agree that we should make a nice comprehensive package to look at. But I'm somewhat comforted that this new code is at least bringing us closer, even though we don't have our reach codes ready to go yet.
Correct. The Energy Code does ramp up energy provisions every version, and we have seen that consecutively for the last three, four cycles of the Energy Code, which really means 10 to 12 past years.
Thank you. Any other questions? We do have some public speakers. Let's listen to our public speakers. All of them are on Zoom, so let me go to, we do have Thomas Young. He was unable to join us earlier. I don't see him on my list or my screen here.
He is not on.
So very good. Let's go to Clint Foltz then. Mr. Foltz, are you there? Very good.
Hello, my name is Clint Foltz. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks and a member of the Canaho Climate Coalition. We would have liked to see an amendment to the 2022 California Building Code cycle adoptions that to include all-electric construction in new buildings. I appreciate Dr. Cox, city staff, and council commenting on this. Given the severity of the climate crisis, we need to reduce pollution as quickly as possible, and construction of new buildings with gas infrastructure won't help us meet our climate goals. Additionally, the California Energy Commission shows that all-electric buildings across nearly all types of construction cost less than mixed-fuel buildings. I would hope that the city could and will allocate more resources to the Sustainability Division to help make all-electric construction in new buildings a reality. Given the severity of our drought, I can only imagine that the Sustainability Division has put most of its resources into managing our water situation. But I truly appreciate the work that they're doing to make sure that we have enough water and meet our needs. But I'm really hoping that the city can make all-electric construction in new buildings a priority and put more funding and resources into making that happen. You know, the climate crisis is a threat to every resident in Thousand Oaks. It threatens our respiratory health, our water supply, and those that are susceptible to heat-related illnesses. So I hope that new building ordinance can really happen and as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz. Next up, we have Kat Selm. Ms. Selm, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I really appreciate your time tonight and the conversation that just happened with the staff about electrification. It sounds like this is a priority for everyone, and I'm really excited to hear that. I still would like to say a few words, though. I'm here on behalf of the Canaho Climate Coalition and a resident of Thousand Oaks because I care about gas pollution and I care about the climate crisis, and I care about our buildings and how they get built. So I understand that buildings may be a focus of the Climate and Environmental Action Plan, but I do think that an opportunity is really being missed here to not address greenhouse gas pollution from new buildings by amending our building codes now. We can't afford to wait and putting it in the CAPP, that's still a couple more years potentially because, you know, putting it into the CAPP, it still actually has to be passed as an ordinance. So drafting it, putting it in a document, it still then has to be passed. So this just takes more time. Every new building that gets approved now with gas infrastructure locks in greenhouse gas pollution for decades and contributes to even more costly retrofits down the road. The recently-approved To Ranch and Baxter projects prove not only that all-electric, more sustainable projects with affordable units pencil out, but that the people of Thousand Oaks actually want these types of projects built here. One easier way to do this administratively would be with a public health and safety ordinance similar to what Santa Barbara County has done. This wouldn't require CEC approval. It wouldn't have to be changed and altered every three years and can be adopted at any time. This is low-hanging fruit on addressing climate pollution. Even if it's a smaller fraction of our emissions than older homes or transportation, why would we wait on this? It's just a no-brainer. We ask that you put your money where your priorities are and invest in environmental sustainability, which is a council priority number six. If your staff doesn't have the resources they need to commit to doing this now, then the city should reinvest more in their priorities. Thank you all so much for listening to my thoughts tonight. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Selm. And next up, we have Faith Grant. Ms. Grant.
Thank you, Mayor Engler, and good evening, council members. I also want to comment on the possibility of putting all-electric ordinance in from a public and health-safety standpoint. Thousand Oaks has an opportunity to introduce a health and safety ordinance to reduce cancer-causing emissions by adopting an all-electric building code for new construction. Last week's study by PSC Healthy Energy found that natural gas stoves and ovens can leak harmful chemicals even when they're not in use. The study found that at least 12 hazardous air pollutants from gas stoves, including benzene, a chemical known to cause cancer. Gas stoves expose people to levels of benzene up to seven times the safe exposure levels set by the California EPA. According to the CDC, exposure to benzene causes tremors, irregular heartbeat, headaches, confusion, dizziness, and even death. Children in homes with gas stoves have a 42% increased risk of having asthma symptoms due to indoor pollutants. Researcher Eric Lebell states that emissions from a gas stove, even when off, can produce benzene levels that are equivalent to living with a smoker. His simple solution is to replace gas stoves with an electric one. Roughly 50 municipalities within California have banned or discouraged the installation of gas stoves in new construction. The goal of 8B is to bring our code into compliance with the California State Building Code. And the essential purpose of the California State Building Code is to protect and promote public health, safety, and welfare through building construction standards. We're asking the Thousand Oaks staff and city council to protect our health and safety and add an ordinance that will eliminate the risk of natural gas by going all-electric in new construction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. And that is our last speaker on this item, so we can close our public hearing. And open the questions or the comments to our staff to respond to our public speakers.
Thank you, Mayor. As we understood and heard, the electrification element of new buildings is definitely at the forefront of mind here. And no doubt, this is what has just been addressed and discussed. We are looking at this entirely. Just because today the electrification or any other reach code comes our way is not on the ordinance before you doesn't mean that we cannot take that opportunity when we better understand and research what is the appropriate way for Thousand Oaks to be able to protect further the safety. Building codes already include minimized safety. You're seeing that, as was very clarified, through even the indoor air quality increases through the energy requirements as minimums. So the state has provided that to us. We're continuing to modify that. We will continue to review these and ultimately come back with a better comprehensive package at the discretion of council's direction, of course, public input. The ultimate element of eliminating or creating some additional funding for sustainability, I do that to council to make direction. Ultimately, I can't speak to that during this ordinance. But nevertheless, I will say that we definitely have, Santa Barbara as an example, and other many jurisdictions that have passed this. It's just a matter of understanding what's the proper policy and the proper way to do this. If it goes through the building standard process, understand this is a three-year process that we lock in and we have very stringent criteria to meet to ensure we are abiding by the minimized safety and what we call the 10-point criteria, which establishes a variety of requirements to ensure we're meeting minimum and/or exceeding the state requirements to the nature of minimized safety procurement within the city. Last element I would say is that, yes, the all-electric component is definitely a big reach code. I would encourage to and would love to continue to have the conversation and understanding of other alternatives of reach codes that exist and give the development community and/or owners, property owners, to understand all the options that they have. Electrification is a great solution, but I also recognize that it's not the only solution, and folks may decide to achieve reach requirements in other means. And I would like to make that available to them as a general policy, with, of course, council direction and guidance. I think that's all I have responding to those comments at the moment. So thank you. Any other questions?
Very good. Questions, colleagues? Ms. Bill de la Peña.
Thank you. We heard that this is sort of the low-hanging fruit tonight, and other municipalities or jurisdictions have passed this. I know that the Sustainability Department was inundated with the transition from waste management to Athens, and so our Climate Environmental Action Plan took a backseat. We've been at this for at least two years. And if we need to add more resources, that would be great. But this is so pressing because we've tried to pass this plan or have a draft already, maybe, what, two years ago? We were starting this, and we're not making quite as fast a progress as maybe we should. So that is why I'm bringing this up tonight. Maybe the city manager would like to weigh in on this.
Yeah, certainly. And I'll have Dr. Cox step down as well to add a finer point on my comments. I think it's important sequentially to remind the council how all these pieces fit together, right? So this is flowing in through our general plan process. The council established a land use map. That land use map is going through an environmental review. That environmental review and the land use map associated with that creates a circulation plan. That circulation plan drives greenhouse gas recommendations. All these things are interconnected. And so from a timing perspective, it's not about backseat because of the waste-harvey agreement or anything. It's sequentially going through that process of evaluating the environmental. It's sequentially that going through that process of evaluating the environmental and then working through, because the single largest driver of greenhouse gas is that land use, is that land use element. And so that's a key component. Dr. Cox will much more eloquently speak to that, but, and these are very important policy considerations on the part of the council, and I think being presented as a package through thorough stakeholder engagement and review is what's important from our perspective so that we're providing you well-rounded suggestions. And the council can certainly, at that point, weigh in on where they want to go in a whole range of potential areas. Dr. Cox, can you add to that?
Yes, certainly. So as you know, we have already embarked on that climate planning process and held several stakeholder meetings. We still, we have been using that input, you know, to help us draft our policies. So that input has been very important. We continue to do that, particularly with all the public community events that we hold. I would say that there have been some shifts in the way that some of these reach codes, particularly the electrification code, has been adopted. So if you go through the California Energy Commission process where you modify the energy code with the building with this three-year process, you have to redo that every three years. And so even if we had done one previously, we would have had to do it again for the 2022 codes. So there are other processes that have been evolving that over the last couple of years, more jurisdictions have used the health and safety code. And so now we're in a position really that we need to really evaluate those alternatives from both a legal and risk perspective and also from, you know, the most viable and expedient process moving forward. So there have been sort of some advantages in us not moving forward too quickly because we've gained from the experience of what some of the parts that the other jurisdictions have taken. So, yeah, and the other thing is that with the new code, so all the buildings, all buildings, residential, multifamily, commercial, they all have to be electric-ready now. So when you think about it from a cost perspective, if you're building a new building and having to put in the electrical wiring and everything else to make it ready for electric appliances, then it's more cost-effective just to put in electric appliances at that point. You wouldn't wire it for, to be electric-ready and then put in gas. So we are benefiting from that change in the code. And also, as was mentioned, many of these new electric retro, the electric alternatives, the heat pumps, for example, for water heating and for air conditioning are more cost-effective. So as you've seen in our newest developments moving forward, those larger multifamily projects have chosen that route themselves. So it's not that sort of all is lost and these opportunities have gone and it's wasted because that's the path that most of the developers are choosing and probably will continue to, not to, you know, not to try to delay any decisions. We just want to make sure that we do take into account the whole breadth of knowledge, the stakeholder input, and everything else when we do make these policy decisions.
And I just wanted to just add on something there. I don't want to minimize the effect toward the climate that we've done with our transition to a new waste holler. One of the primary purposes behind that transition was the implementation of AB 1383, which specifically tries to capture methane production out of landfills. That is something that I think was well-intended on your part, and we had a great, we're having a reduction of greenhouse gases because of that. So I think, I don't want to minimize what you've done before. There's more work to be done, of course, but we have, we have been on the road here of trying to make ourselves compliant with the state going forward. Mr. Adams, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. On the topic of greenhouse gases, when we debated over our land use map, I guess about a year ago or so, we purposely drove housing towards the so-called 101 corridor, which a vast amount of the 101 corridor is Thousand Oaks Boulevard. For one reason, that's where the only space we have left to build housing, and for another reason is that's where all the amenities and the stores and the things that people go to are. Because, and here's the point, 60% of greenhouse gases is caused by vehicle miles traveled. And I'm not trying to downplay the, you know, the benefits of electrification, but the vast amount of it is by vehicle miles traveled. So we need housing concentrated in places where people can ditch the cars and get out and start walking. That is the ultimate, so to disavow housing on the boulevard for whatever particular reason is just not acknowledging the climate challenges that we face. And you take the 299 project that's just about done. That new retail grocery store is half a block away. The Jan's Mall is two blocks away. Tarantula Hill is right across the street. I'm hoping that we start to see people out walking around and the cars are left behind. And that's, that's, that's a big portion of how to get rid of greenhouse gases.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from our colleagues? Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Al, I understand your propensity for that. I would frankly prefer the large malls that a lot of shops are closed in now, like Herb's and Arvelus. Wouldn't that be a desirable place for housing? Those people wouldn't have to walk to the market, they wouldn't have to walk to a restaurant. I mean, they could walk, they wouldn't have to drive, I'm saying.
I agree with you.
And also the fairly large mall at Arvelus and Moore Park Road in the northwest section, and the Jan's Mall.
And the Oaks Mall.
I would, yeah, and the Oaks Mall, and I would have hoped that the Jan's people would have come to us with the housing first and then maybe the hotel later. I think they might have done it in reverse order, but, yeah, I think housing near commercial is excellent. I'm not excited about Thousand Oaks Boulevard, though.
I've heard that.
Well, I think, I think this is the perfect example why we need a, we need a motion on how we get these codes to be, to how we get these codes to be able to make these new constructions.
Well, I think we ought to have these discussions once a while. We never get together, but on Tuesday nights.
Well, we're kind of wandering off topic here.
Well, yeah, I think, I think we're looking at a code adoption of the, of the new codes, and I would like to have a motion.
I will go ahead and move the staff recommendation with the acknowledgement that I am so glad that staff was able to negotiate development agreements with two out of three most recent developments that were willing to go the extra mile and do electrification and did what was asked to do, and, and that is to their credit. I hope that future developments will be managed or handled the same way until we do have an electrification code or reach code in place.
Is that a motion to adopt?
That is a motion, yes.
Very good. A motion to adopt? Very good. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0, and I do have an ordinance title to read into the record. It's an ordinance to repeal sections 8-1.01 through 8-1.24 and chapters 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 14, 16, and 17 of Title 8, and to re-adopt sections 8-1.01 through 8-1.24 and chapters 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 14, 16, and 17 to Title 8 of the municipal code by adopting by reference Title 24, 2022 California Code of Regulations, including the California Administrative Code, California Building Code, California Residential Code, California Existing Building Code, California Historical Building Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Electrical Code, California Energy Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Reference Standards Code, and 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, and adding sections 8-1.27 relating to emergency housing and chapter 4 to Title 8 relating to code administration, MCA 2022-70456.
Good. Could you repeat that? Very good. We're going on to our next topic tonight. This is a, some department reports having to do with one of our Mini Mansions properties in town. Madam Clerk, do you need to make any announcements? Very good. It's just a department report. I'm happy to say that Lynn Oshida is here to present to us tonight, and thank you, and please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. City staff together with Mini Mansions is bringing before you tonight the 2022 refinance for the well-needed Bella Vista improvements. Bella Vista is located on Los Feliz Drive between Herb's Road and Caneo School Road. The 72-unit apartment is located on five acres. The property is located between the Shadows Apartments and Ranch Mobile Home Park and across the street from Garden View Terrace with the Area Housing Authority and Casa de Feliz Apartments with Mini Mansions. The apartments were built in 1970. In 2005, Mini Mansions acquired and rehabbed the property at a price of $15 million. The property is conditioned to remain affordable for 55 years. This slide shows the 2005 former RDA assistance of $5.2 million at Bella Vista. In 2019, Mini Mansions was seeking to bring in new bond financing to Bella Vista. At that time, the city adopted two resolutions to approve the 2019 refinance plan. Due to regulatory constraints, the refinance plan was canceled in 2020. For the new 2022 refinancing plan to move forward, staff is recommending rescinding the two resolutions tonight. With the current request, Mini Mansions seeks to refinance and repay the existing bond with a traditional Fannie Mae loan with JP Morgan Chase Bank to conduct a, to conduct rehabilitation and to preserve its affordability. The purpose of these improvements is to increase the energy efficiency, to create accessible paths of travel with ramps and railing throughout the project, and to create four fully accessible units. The renovation also includes replacing the carports and approving the parking lot. Mini Mansions requests that the city accelerate forgiveness on the $1 million RDA grant, approve property transfer to Mini Mansions affiliate Bella Vista 72 LLC, accept subordination to the new JP Morgan Chase loan, replace the bond service fee with an annual monitoring fee of $5,000. City council approved a similar change in 2016 with the Mini Mansions project at Shadow Hills. The 2022 request also includes modification to the 2005 RDA loan documents to clarify that the manager's unit is not income-restricted, to clarify references to the Cal HFA Help Loan, and lastly authorize city manager to finalize and execute city documents related to the 2022 refinance. Table shows affordable unit mix with the manager's unit not subject to affordable restrictions. The project will remain affordable until 2060. This slides summarizes the staff's recommendation for Bella Vista affordable apartments. With this, Community Development Staff and Finance Staff, along with Mini Mansions, are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Adams does have a question.
I do. Maybe this might be for Jamie. It's on a financial side here. I mean, I get the, what's going on here, that Mini Mansions wants to repay the $4 million and then take out a new loan and then use the difference to rehab Bella Vista. I get it. That's good, because it needs it. But just two things. Why would we forgive this grant when they don't, they don't owe it, but what it is is it's our insurance policy that it will stay affordable, correct?
I believe the units, even without the grant, are required to stay affordable. It was always assumed that this grant would be forgiven or just doing it earlier, but even without this grant on there, they are still income-restricted throughout, through 2060, so that wouldn't affect that at all.
Was there some benefit to Mini Mansions that we forgive this now versus when it was supposed to be forgiven?
Applicant has said no.
Hmm.
Go ahead.
When is it supposed to be forgiven?
I believe in another 17 years or so.
Seventy?
Seventeen, yeah.
Seventy years.
The benefit is, Rick Schrader from Mini Mansions, the benefit is that...
I'll be old-old by then.
Is that it just sort of cleans up the existing financing.
What does it...
One less encumbrance upon the property.
Is it encumbering your ability to get the loan?
Not necessarily, but it's just another layer. We already have a loan with the state under the home program. This loan, it's just one less thing.
Okay.
It would also require, you know, the city to continue to monitor this loan, and so it was part of the 1998 tax-exempt bond, and that bond has already exhausted, and so we just thought that this might have been an opportunity to just forgive this $1 million loan, because we still have, you know, existing loans with the RDA, with the 2.5 Housing SSI loan and the 1.6 Cal Alpha loan that's part of the RDA loan.
Okay. All right. And then just one of the, it was mentioned about a 3% rate in the, in the staff report?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that fair?
I think based on the current environment, that's pretty fair.
Okay. Well, that's why I brought up the current environment. As we all know, interest rates have gone up quite a bit, but, I mean, we are dealing with one of the premier nonprofits in the city that provides incredible resources for us, so, okay, scratch that question. I'm sticking as a financial guy. Anyway, all right, I guess the, it's a non-event, this forgivable, forgivable grant, as long as we know that it's going to stay affordable, which that's been your track record for eons, so, anyway, thank you.
Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Are there any public speakers?
We have one, but it's Mr. Thomas Young, who has not been on all night, so...
Because I was going to make a motion.
We need to close the hearing.
Oh, it's a hearing, yes, of course.
Not a hearing, it's a department report.
Oh, it's not.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a department report. So we do have, and I don't see him online, so we do not have any public speakers, so I would entertain a motion or any discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move staff approval of this item.
The staff recommendation.
Oh, I thought you said staff approval.
No. Any comments, questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0, and I have nothing to read.
Okay. Happily, yeah, happily she has nothing to read.
Very good. If I could turn it over now to Mr. Powers for updates?
Thanks so much. We'll actually be back here again next week, a week from tonight, on the 1st of November. We will be opening the meeting, just as a reminder, with our borderline citywide day of remembrance as we're transitioning into November and will begin remembrance at that meeting. We have two public hearings, our triannual public health water quality report, and then we have a TEFRA hearing for a nonprofit... we have a Tefra hearing for a nonprofit business that's looking to relocate into our community. We have two department reports, one, the update on our Hillcrest property and the results of the RFP process that the Council had directed earlier this year. We also have, we'll have an update on our inclusionary housing and linkage fee feasibility, and next, a study for discussion by the Council. So that is a full agenda for us next Tuesday evening.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Turning it over to our city attorney.
Yes, we do have two closed sessions tonight. Both of them are conferences with legal counsel on existing litigation pursuant to G M Code Section 54956.98. The first is Scott Murphy's versus City of Thousand Oaks. The second is Caitlin Clint versus City of Thousand Oaks, and it is not likely I'll have anything to report.
Very good. With that, I'll call for an adjournment, but first, I just want to, I was reminded earlier tonight by one of our public speakers about some of the discourse that occurs in our city. We are in the throes of a political campaigns right now, and I want to urge everybody to remember, to give everybody a little bit of grace. We, this is a time that we all need to concentrate on being civil to one another, and I encourage us all to keep on that track. With that, I'll call for an adjournment.